What it looks like without that off. I'm gonna need this one.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Marshall. It is six thirty-five. You have a quorum of the board. You are the co-host of this meeting. Amherst Media is with us. I do believe you're good to go.
Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. My name is Doug Marshall and as Chair of the Amherst Planning Board, I am calling this meeting to order at six thirty-four P M. This meeting is being recorded and is available via lives, via available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one and extended by Chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three and further extended by Bill, House, House Bill sixty-two as amended by Senate Bill twenty-five oh-six. This planning board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. The Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the town website's calendar listing for this meeting or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable, for reasons of hardship, of economic hardship or despite despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town websites. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Colton.
I am here.
Fred Hartwell.
I'm here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
Hi, Doug Marshall, I'm present. Johanna Newman.
Here.
And we do not have Karen Winter with us at present. When she arrives, we will try to note the time that she arrives. Board members, if technical issues arise, we may pause to address the problem and then continue the meeting. If the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please be aware the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Public comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the planning board chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can generally express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the planning board chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. Okay, time is six thirty-seven, and we'll start off with the minutes for approval. We have minutes from just February nineteenth of this year. Johanna, your hand went up quickly, quicker than.
I reviewed them, they looked great, and I wanted to move to approve the minutes.
You do, okay? Thank you for that motion. Bruce?
Well, I'll second, but I have a question of clarification, and then I'll, my second stands. It's on the first page, I think. Anyway, it's the, the first part of the U-Drive review and item number fourteen where it said, it says the breakout of the office commercial safe is unchanged. I think it's probably meant to say space. And if that's correct, then I suggest we change that to the right word and then the second stands.
Okay, thank you, Bruce.
I'm good with that friendly amendment.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve as drafted with the one edit that was just discussed. All right, Bruce, we'll start with you.
I approve.
And Fred.
I, I approve.
Thank you, Fred. Jesse?
I.
Johanna?
I.
And I'm an I as well. That is five in favor, and we have one absence. Okay, we will now go to the public comment period. We have a number of attendees tonight from the public, so this is the time that I usually read the names of the people that I can see. I will do so. While I'm doing that, if you want to make a public comment about a topic that does not appear later on the agenda, this is the time to raise your hand, and we will entertain those comments now. Okay, Ken Rosenthal, Charlotte, Tad Jackson, Charlotte Mullin, Christine Brestrop, Corey McCandless, David Kelly, Donna Mallard, Douglas Adler, Dylan, Dylan H. Barstow-Mance, Elizabeth Davis, Elizabeth Perkins, Eric Bachrock, Jennifer Sussman, one iPhone, and then a second iPhone, and then a third iPhone with sixty-six in parentheses after it. James from W A M C, Jan, Jennifer Hickston, Jara Smith, John Armstrong, Kathleen Woods, Meslak, Masalski, Masalski, Kathy Melly, Katie Norton, Kyle, Lisa Juris, Maria Kopicki, Matt Moyan, Mara Keen, Michael Gilbert, Michael Lipinski, Paul Juris, Renee's iPhone, Sandy with an I, Sherry Wilson, Tom Reedy, and a Zoom user. All right, so we have thirty-nine attendees, and at the moment, we have one person who wants to make a comment about some general topic which is not later on the agenda. Let's bring over Ken Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to just tell you that your member, Karen Winter, just left my house. She was having trouble getting online, and she came here to try to do it. She's on her way home, so she will be shortly online. And I hope you and she are able to connect so that she can participate in the meeting. That's the only thing I wanted to say now, which is to explain to you that she was having difficulty. Your, your member, Karen Winter, was having difficulty connecting with you, and now she's heading home, and we hope that she'll be able to do that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Any other public comment of a general nature? Now? Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. And so we will move on. So, time is six forty-two. Pam, am I correct that this next public hearing was advertised for some time after six forty-two?
Yes, it was actually advertised for six thirty-five, so we're good to go. I'll bring over Mr. Reedy.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is S U B, or so, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised, and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding S U B two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-three, W D Coles Incorporated, Chutesbury Road. Request approval for a four-lot preliminary subdivision plan under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Sections eighty-one L and eighty-one S located at map nine B dash eleven, nine B dash twelve, ninety twenty-six, and ninety twenty-seven, all in the R O zoning district. So are there any board member disclosures at this point about this topic? All right. Welcome, Tom.
Good to see you again, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tom Reedy, attorney with Bacon Wilson out of Amherst, here on behalf of the applicant for a preliminary subdivision plan approval, as the chair noted. This was in front of the, the board last fall, and in its exact form that it is now, the board approved it. As you know, this is to free zoning. What happens is, from the filing of that preliminary plan, you've got seven months to file a definitive plan. It did not seem like the zoning bylaw for solar was imminent at that point, and so we didn't file the definitive plan, and so I think as Ms. Brestrop did a tremendous job in her application report, as she always does, we're restarting the clock. So we refiled the exact same preliminary plan. We're hoping for the same approval. This one, we will follow up within seven months. We're the definitive plan. We'd accept an approval with the same conditions that you put on it back in, I want to say, maybe September of, of last year. I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm happy to show the plan. I don't need to glaze over it. I know at least Bruce's disdain for this process, so I'm trying to accelerate it.
All right, thank you. Bruce, Bruce's opinion notwithstanding, I would like you to bring the plan up so that we can at least incorporate it into the recording for this meeting. And people who watch it subsequent will have a complete picture of what we're talking about.
Of course. So we've got Chutesbury Road, if you can see my screen and, and my cursor, so we've got Chutesbury Road on the left side of the screen. The property, as it currently exists, is outlined in this darker line. We've got some topographic features on there. We've got wetlands on there. And then you'll see that this is the proposed new roadway, which will provide the requisite frontage to the four new building lots being proposed. So here's that roadway, cul-de-sac, Lot one, twenty-four acres, Lot two, thirty acres, Lot three, thirty-seven acres, and Lot four, thirty-five acres. And so that's the plan, and that's the roadway, and it's really what you're proving is the roadway, which then gives the requisite frontage for the building lots to exist as building lots.
Right, okay. Thank you. I think you could stop sharing at this point. Thank you. Board members, most of us were on the board last year when this came before the board the first time. It doesn't appear to have changed in any way. Any questions? Any discussion? Any new opinions about this? I think I would like to probably review the terms and conditions, the findings and conditions that we required last year, just to make sure we're in line with those, and nothing has changed. Nate, I see your hands.
Sure, thanks, Doug. Tom, I just want to make sure that, you know, you've taken into account wetlands. You know, I spoke with Erin, and she mentioned there's, you know, a fair amount on the property, so you know, is it feasible that the road layout would remain pretty, relatively the same with a definitive, or is there, you know, would you expect a big changes to actually, you know, I don't know how that, I haven't looked at the property close enough to see.
Yeah, it's a great question. I don't think we'd expect it to change. If it does, I would suspect that we would know prior to the definitive. And so the definitive would likely reflect that updated wetland, let's put it another way.
Yeah, I mean, there's no wetland crossings on the road, right? As far as I can tell?
No, there's, there's an existing along the current woods road that accesses the property. There's a culvert that goes under that actually takes the drainage from, it's all the sheet flow from Chutesbury Road, and it goes under that woods road. I think technically on the southerly abutting parcel, that's deemed the local jurisdiction wetland. And so if we were to ever build this definitive, this roadway, we'd have to go through Conservation Commission in likely maybe a limited project or a notice of intent to get that approved, so. But I don't believe that there's any road, I don't think there's any crossings.
Okay, Pam, I see that Karen Winter is in the attendees.
Oh, okay, I'll bring her over.
The time is six forty-eight, so why don't we bring her over in, onto the panel?
Yep.
Fred?
Yeah, I'm just, obviously, this is waiting for the solar bylaw, and I'm just wondering if we have any prognostication from town staff as to where that is and it's in process.
Nate? Anything you'd want to say about CRC, right?
Yeah, it's with the Community Resources Committee, and it'll, I think the idea would be in the next, you know, maybe three months to try to get it in, in shape to be a zoning amendment, to be sent to council, then referred back to go through the official process, so. You know, if it, if that's the case, then you know, I, you know, there could be a vote, you know, at the end of, you know, this year, you know, closer to November, December. It really depends on how, you know, kind of the timeline to get it to become a zoning amendment. But, you know, something in the next six to seven months, likely.
Okay. Fred, any other questions? Okay. All right. So no more comment from the board, correct? Bruce, before you, don't make a motion.
No, I just was waiting to hear the answer to your question about the, the findings from last time. You asked whether what they were and whether there was anything different, whether we would choose to add or subtract, and I'm interested in the answer to that question.
Okay. Well, Pam, I assume you have the findings and conditions?
Well, I don't know if you've seen me shuffling paper over here, but I don't seem to have them. Nate, can you go onto the S drive and, and pull it up? Or Tom, do you have the decision handy?
Yeah, I've got in the packet, so I can, let me just enlarge this, like, share my screen.
I also, oh, for a minute, I had a hand up from Christine Brestrop on the attendees. Maybe she was just gonna tell us where to find the findings and conditions.
If they're in the packet, I have them, but Tom has them now.
If you see this quoted material.
They're on the screen right now.
Yep, there they are.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So we approved the, the, the two waivers to, to have the one inch equals forty feet scale and for the provision of a public sewer line. And then, Tom, is that the only condition, the one at the bottom there?
That is correct, yeah. And, and just to be clear, there were technically three waivers, sanitary water supply, and then the contents one.
Okay, yeah.
But you combined.
Right, 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 okay. Okay. So I guess, let's see, if we were to make a motion, we would probably be saying we approve the preliminary subdivision plan, and we, we approved the three waivers that were previously approved, and we impose the one condition that is listed here. And then we would like to close the hearing. Did that cover the basis here? Nate?
We could also take public comment.
Good point, good point. I, I had that in mind, and then I lost it. Okay.
I can stop sharing.
Yeah, why don't you, so we can all see each other. Pam, why don't you bring over Mike Lipinski?
Hi, Mike.
Hello, Michael Lipinski, one-six-seven, Chutesbury Road, Amherst. Just have a couple of questions. The, the first one is, just to make sure this is clear, the applicant saying that there was absolutely no work done on a definitive plan over the past seven months. Is that true?
Tom, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. We have not advanced the plan to a place where we'd be ready to submit at this time, so we went with the preliminary plan.
Okay.
That really answered the question. I'm just wondering if any work was done on the definitive plan.
I guess I'm not sure how that's relevant.
Well, it's, it's relevant in the sense of whether this is just going to be something that just keeps happening every seven months or so, with, with no real you know, final definitive plan that comes out of it.
Well, I mean, we can't control the applicant's behavior. One thing the town could do would be to enact the new solar bylaw or decide not to, one way or the other.
That brings up my second question then. It sounded like Tom was saying they would actually be working on the details of a definitive plan this time. Is that true?
He did state that they intended to submit a definitive plan within the seven months.
And then my, my follow-up would be based on the timing that Mr. Malloy said for this solar bylaw actually being passed, it seems like the seven-month period for this particular preliminary plan might actually run out again before the solar bylaw actually is passed. And if that's the case, if that's the case, will they actually be working on a definitive plan since the whole purpose of doing this is to find out, you know, whether they want to be under the solar bylaw or not?
Well, I, I think that when Mr. Reedy said that they intended to submit a definitive plan this time, that they understood that they would do it within the seven months and that that could easily be before the solar bylaw was passed or not.
Exactly. And would that involve actually going to the Conservation Commission too as part of that process?
I don't know the answer to that. Tom or Nate, do you either, do you want to comment on that?
Nate, I'd have to look at the subdivision rules and regulations to see what the, I know there's, there's a line in there about Conservation Commission, but I don't know how where you have to do that in the process.
Right. Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say that, you know, Mass General Law allows property owners to do this, and so, you know, if you want to call it gaming the system, whatever, it's legal and it's done a lot, and so, a, an applicant or a property owner, you know, can wait until they determine that a zoning amendment is actually going to a place where it could become an action, and then they file another preliminary subdivision plan to start the clock, so. You know, if, if the applicant decides in five months from now, they want to submit a different preliminary subdivision plan, they could, that's allowed. And so we're not, you know, we respond to what's submitted, and we're not, you know, if they had worked on a definitive and it was never submitted, we don't know that they had worked on it, and that's not really part of our review. It's really what's submitted, so, you know, we'll wait and see. I mean, you know, I'm sure the applicant and property owner will, will do the same with the solar bylaw progression, and if they think they need to file a definitive to have the zoning freeze, they will. If they don't, they could wait and then resubmit a preliminary again, and that's, that's totally legal, and that, you know, that happens all across the state.
All right, Mr. Lipinski, have we given you? Have, have we answered your questions?
Yeah, to a certain extent, yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands raised from the public. So, Jesse?
Thanks, I was going to move that we approve the plan with the conditions and close the hearing, if I got all the points.
All right, so. Bruce? Bruce, you're, you're muted, Bruce.
Checking the motion, sorry.
All right, thank you. Pam, do you think you have the motion adequately recorded?
I sure do.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Start with you, Bruce.
I'm an I.
And Fred?
I.
Jesse?
I.
Johanna?
I.
And Karen? What was an I? Thank you. All right, and I'm an I as well. That's six in favor, no, no opposed. Motion passes. Tom, we hope to see you in seven months or less.
Wonderful. I look forward to it. I'm sure you'll see me in seven months or less, whether it's for this. Good luck, see you.
Okay. All right, time now is six fifty-eight. And we will move on to the fourth item on the agenda. So before I start reading this intro, I want to say that this is a new public hearing. We had a couple of, we had at least one hearing that we participated in earlier this spring on this same topic. We had at least one second hearing that we advertised for this topic. However, due to some technical issues with the Zoom platform, that hearing was canceled, and we never continued that hearing to any other date certain, so we are starting a new series, perhaps, if this goes more than one night for this topic. So with that prelude, in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, this public hearing has been duly advertised and notice thereof has been posted and is being held for the purpose of providing the opportunity for interested citizens to be heard regarding SPR two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-eight and SPP two thousand and twenty-five dash zero-one, Archipelago Investments LLC, Gould Way and Lanin Lane. Request site plan review approval under Section three point three-two-five of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with three buildings, including a hundred and forty residential units, approximately twelve thousand square feet of commercial space, one hundred and eighty parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request a special permit under footnote A of Table three, Article six of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback beyond the maximum required building height to exceed the maximum allowed and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. This is in the B V C Village Center Business Zoning District. Parcel is map four twenty-five B, parcels fifty-two and fifty-eight. So do we have board member disclosure for this project? All right. In that case, I believe we have Kyle Wilson here with us to describe the, to introduce the, the project. Welcome, Kyle.
Good evening. How are you?
Fine.
Great. I could hop on and share and start the, with the new public hearing, start over.
Please do so.
Sorry, guys, getting there. Okay. Can everybody see my screen?
I believe so.
So I've got some intro slides, and then I'll get right into the project. You guys have all heard this before. I'll try to be as brief as I can while still getting the point across. This project is in South Amherst. It's in a BBC lot zone parcel, two parcels, actually. It's around Atkins. And it is new housing via a mixed-use, three mixed-use buildings. The first slide shows New England, shows the cost of housing and the lack of affordability in New York and Boston, and our little Amherst, three hours from New York and two hours from Boston. On the right half of the slide shows a post of the fifty largest metros and the inflows or outflows of people moving into or out to, out of those municipalities, and New York City is, has the most people leaving. Boston is
And New York City is, has the most people leaving. Boston is, is close by. New York City has between 150 and 350, 350,000 people a year leaving. And Boston has between 10 and 40,000 people a year leaving. Again, we're three hours from New York City and two hours from Boston. A couple of recent posts that show that all of New England has a housing crisis. This value of single-family homes has spiked and has doubled in many spots, looking at Connecticut, Maine, Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Hampshire and Rhode Island. And then below is the previous 30 years between 1960 and 1990 and the last 35 between 1990 and 2024. Between 60 and 90, 900,000 homes were built and 868,000 residents. And yet, in the past 35, only 490,000 homes have been built and 1,000,001 residents have had, while the average home size has dropped. 23, Mass had the lowest rental vacancy of any state out of all 50 in the country. We're at 2.5%. We're much lower than everybody else and we're way lower than the average of 6.5%. It inhibits movement and mobility and creates problems for pricing. Same guy, similar post, talks about some of the issues that municipalities across the Commonwealth deal with as they attempt to increase housing production, which everybody agrees we, we very much need. And those things are zoning regulations, new energy codes, prolonged community processes, inclusionary zoning and other policies are all well-intended, but do create barriers to new housing. A recent Realtor.com post, which graded states on their affordability in home building, Massachusetts gets an F. Massachusetts is the number one most expensive state out of all 50 to raise a child. The number one contributing factor is the cost of housing. Massachusetts is the second most expensive state to raise a family of four, behind Hawaii. Again, housing. UMass Amherst poll from earlier this year, end of last year, asking what the most important political issue in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is, and the big word in the middle is housing. And with that, Governor Haley has released two reports in the last couple of months. So these are both from February. A Home for Everyone, which was the state's very first comprehensive housing plan for the entire Commonwealth, and Unlocking Housing Production. And those two reports are put out because housing is the biggest word in the middle of the political poll. Governor Haley was in Amherst in November of '23. She was here to talk about democracy and the threats to it, which we're dealing with currently, and also housing. Cost of housing in Amherst from '87 to 2024. So assuming most of us moved to Amherst at some point, maybe it's on this list. And when you moved here, what was the average home price and what is it now? And what it's showing is a huge uptick in the past 10 years, especially post-COVID, and the average home price is now over $600,000. A single-family home of $600,000 is roughly $5,000 a month. So those are the table stakes to get into our community in a single-family home. We have 11,000 housing units currently. That's gone up from 76.95 back in 1980 to just under 11,000 back in 2020. And there is broad agreement with all the housing conversations that are being had around town that we need 5,000 new housing units. So we need to increase the number of housing units by almost 50%. 5,000 housing units, a lot of housing units. It's also a lot of potential tax revenue. And the question is, where do we, where could we, or where do we build that housing? The reality is, single-family housing has been built out in Amherst. We're 99% built out, roughly. So our housing future is multifamily. So multifamily, the benefits of multifamily, it's more dense and more sustainable. There's more units per acre and there's more tax revenue per acre. The housing future of Amherst is multifamily. This is our bylaw. This is Table 3 within our bylaw with some edits that I put on there. And it talks about multifamily being apartments and mixed use. Both of those terms are defined in our bylaw and those building types are only allowed in certain resident or certain zones. That's RVC, BG, BL, COM, BBC and BN. Those are highlighted in the blue box and the pink box. The total number of acres in Amherst is just under 18,000. And if you look at the acres in each of those zones that allow multifamily, it is less than 2% of the total landmass of Amherst. And in a number of those, the density within that is limited. So in RVC, in BL and COM, less than 10 units per acre are allowed per the additional water per family. This is a map that could have more contrast, but it shows our overall 17,800 acres and the areas that are zoned for mult, for multifamily, which is apartments and mixed use. So as I said, less than 2% is apartments or mixed use and less than 0.7% of Amherst is zoned for mixed use by right at density greater than 10 units per acre, which is the project we're talking about. So in the very bottom, right underneath Hampshire College, you can see Atkins and you can see the two parcels that we're discussing here tonight. This is the last five years in Amherst and the number of residential housing units that have received a building permit in 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023 and 2024. As you'll see, the total is 483 units over five years. So we average under 100 units a year. If we need 5,000 units, we have a very long time horizon to try to affect the cost curve with the cost of housing in Amherst. And under the multifamily description at the bottom, with the future being multifamily, you'll see there's blue highlights and yellow highlights. The yellow highlights are those projects that were by right, meaning they were mixed use and they were zoned accordingly. And the blue were projects that were not by right. So those were all through the ZBA. So those are places where our bylaw actually states that we don't, we're not looking for housing. And so it's clear here that 5,000 units are a very long time out and our zoning bylaw makes new housing production extremely difficult. And this is confronting municipalities across the state. It's why we've got our first comprehensive housing plan that the governor's just put out. And a couple of things are noted that this housing crisis didn't appear overnight. It's decades in the making. The shortage of homes is the root cause of the issue. And the number one thing to be recommended in this report is increase as-of-right zoning capacity for multifamily housing. So if we're looking at our zoning map, having less than 0.7% of the landmass dedicated to mixed use by right at a time when we have a housing crisis is suboptimal. So the report calls for 222,000 new housing units in Massachusetts by 2035, which means they have to be permitted now. They have to start construction soon in order to do that. And this talks about where those additional 222,000 housing units need to go and who they could provide housing for. The other report that was put out was the Unlocking Housing Production. It talks about the number of housing units permitted annually and seeing the downward curve from 1960 to 2020. And then the number one recommendation in this report is eliminating parking minimums. So off-street parking is expensive and drives up housing costs and takes away land that could go to housing. So looking at our site, this is a Google aerial shot that we're the star in the middle of the frame here. To the left is Atkins, to the right is Applewood, to the back is Hampshire Village, and in the foreground is Hampshire College. In the back is the Seven Sisters and the Notch and the gravel pit. And our site is in BBC. BBC is the second most dense district in our, in our zoning bylaw. And the purpose of the BBC is to provide areas within the village centers of Amherst that allow for a mix of uses, including retail, commercial office and housing of moderate to high density. Back in 2010, after many decades of work, the town of Amherst and the Commonwealth of Mass and Mass Dot went and performed a huge renovation to the intersection adjacent to the site, put in the two roundabouts to the east of Atkins and installed Gould and Lanin, the two streets that this property has frontage on. And this property, there's a couple aerial shots that show the history of this property. As of a lot of South Amherst, it was an orchard for 100 years ago. So in 1952, when this shot was taken, you can see the outline of the site. You can see orchards occupied most of Amherst, Hampshire College land, all of Atkins land, all of Applewood's land, all of the various iterations of Hampshire Village. '62 was very similar. '85, the introduction of Hampshire College and the introduction, the first phase of condos south of the site and Atkins Market. And then 2012, subsequent construction of Applewood and Eric Carl Museum, Yiddish Book and the remainder of Hampshire Village and the condos. So this is our survey. So there's two parcels, 4.9 acres, 2.7 acres, just over seven and a half acres. And you can see the edge of the vegetated wetlands. This project's currently before the Conservation Commission as well. And those wetlands form the hub and are on the line between the two parcels. You can see the new Gould Way that was installed by the town and the new Lanin Lane that was installed by the town when Mass Dot did the roundabouts east of Atkins. And you'll see Rambling Bay and West Street as the other streets that this project has frontage on. This is a analysis that we did. We checked for groundwater. We checked for soil contamination. This was checking for a total metal analysis and a pesticides analysis. What was found is that the site, as with the history of an orchard, has lead arsenic in the soil. That lead arsenic is throughout the site. It is in, outside of the wetlands and it's also been tested subsequently inside the wetlands. So there's lead arsenic everywhere. Probably if we go back to 1952, aerial shot, you can see an apple tree. That lead arsenic, the cleanup of that lead arsenic is, is determined by the future use. If we're proposing a gas station, it's one thing. If we're proposing residential, it's another. In that we're proposing residential, the cleanup is to remove the lead arsenic, 12 inches of soil. The lead arsenic stays in the upper 12 inches of soil and take it off-site. So in order to redevelop the site and create a, a use that the zoning calls for in BBC, an extensive amount of soil and site remediation has to occur. And that soil and site remediation has to occur within close proximity to the wetlands. And then here are the plans, architectural, landscape and civil, a couple renderings that we have. And we'll quickly take you through those. So Atkins is in the foreground. This is facing south. We have Building 1 that is along Rambling and Bay, which is L-shaped. We have Building 2 that's in the middle, that is along Gould, that reconciles all the grade that is along Gould. And then we have Building 3, which is along West Street, step back so that it aligns with the front of Atkins and has parking between the street and the building. Each of the buildings has a ground floor non-residential component. Building 3 along West Street has the largest percentage from a tenant standpoint and no residential units on the ground floor. Building 2 has the second largest percentage, also includes the lobby and the leasing and fitness and some amenities based for the tenants on the ground floor. And Building 3 has a portion of the ground floor non-residential and then residential units on floors 1, 2, 3 and 4. Each of the buildings are four stories high. Each of the buildings have flat roofs with solar generation and the all-electric mechanical systems on the roof. Each of the buildings will be with the new building code and energy codes in Amherst, will be passive house certified, will be all-electric, including domestic hot water, being created by a CO2-based all-electric hot water heat pump on the roof of each of these buildings. There is parking shown on the west of Building 3. There's one, two, three rows of parking here that would be residential parking. There's a woo nerf, which is a drive aisle where we're taking the extension of Lanin Lane and taking that out to Rambling approximately here, where in the foreground of Applewood. And there's parking along that woo nerf as well. And then there, we're showing parking in the town right of way along Gould, along frontage of the commercial on Building 2. We have a rendering that is from that section. The woo nerf and the connection to Rambling is to the left and looking straight ahead is looking down the parking on Gould and down towards the intersection between Gould and Lanin. The building is mass timber, hybrid mass timber on floors 2, 3 and 4 and a full mass timber on the ground floor to go along with all-electric passive house. The mass timber glue lamps are exposed where there is commercial, non-residential, creates a colonade, creates shelter for inclement weather like we've had recently and allows us to work with the grade, which is pretty tricky to deal with in a number of spots on this site. So you'll see the Luna wood siding that we've proposed up above the triple-pane windows. Every unit has a balcony where you can see these recessed, shadowed areas that have, some are painted, some are left natural. And then you can see the retail space on the corner of Building 2 that has seven, six and a half feet of grade change between the east side and the west side. And you can see the commercial in the distance here on Building 1. Here's the site plan, showing the two lots together as one, showing the wetlands between all the buildings on the south, showing Building 1, L-shaped, along Bay Road, Building 2, along Gould and Building 3, along West Street. Sidewalk connections that complete the sidewalks that the town has started to install when they did the roundabouts create a pedestrian, a connection that is both automobile and pedestrian between Lanin and Rambling that will be open to the public and allow for pedestrian circulation from Rambling to Atkins without having to go on Bay Road, even though we are showing also a sidewalk along Bay Road, which we would work with the town and ever-source to execute. There's power lines that are on the property line. They jump across in front of the solar, et cetera, and some of the stormwater retention along the street is a little tricky down here, but we can get a sidewalk in along Bay Road. Building 1 has a forecourt in front of the parking along the woo nerf. There's another forecourt here, which is serves two purposes, one to allow us to get the trash out of Building 1 and 2 behind a screen, handle that in the morning, and the other is to handle, provide an outdoor space for the commercial areas that are on that corner. And then you can see there's two parking areas on Building 3, one to the east, which is more commercial, one to the west, which would be residential, and that shows here. So this is slightly different than what we showed you back on March 19th, our first hearing, which is 140 parking spaces for our 140 apartments. So every apartment will have one parking space. All the residential parking, all 140 is shown in the blue bands and the commercial parking is shown in the pink or red bands, 47. We have roughly 12,000 square feet of ground floor non-residential retail. Per the bylaw, that's roughly three, or well, it's not roughly, it's three parking spaces per thousand. So we'd be looking at 36 parking spaces. We're showing 47, including those spaces on the town right of way along Gould. This is the first floor plan for Buildings 1, which is L-shaped, and Building 2, which is in the middle. You can see we have two-bed and three-bed units on the ground floor of Building 1. We also have commercial on the east side. We have commercial on the south side of Building 2, along with lobby, lounge, gather and fitness areas. There's a number of, there's stairs and elevators. There's stairs here because we're reconciling a great deal of grade across this site. The intersection of Rambling and Bay Road is up at 293 in terms of elevation. The intersection of Gould and Bay is down at 269. So there's 25 feet plus of grade change along that street. So the slab heights of each of these buildings step down as they go from west to east across the site in order to accommodate that. And a steep section of grading along the south side of the commercial is where, if you go to the site currently, you pull up and it's the dirt patch where people park to reconcile the grade and make all the grade and the accessibility work across the site. You can also see in Building 1, there's a mechanical and trash area that's on the south side that would allow for pickup to come out of this area here. And on Building 2, there's a trash and stair area, which would allow for the same and could be done off-hours relative to commercial. The upper floors show all the residential, a mix between one-bed, two-bed and three-bed units. There's also a couple one-bed and office that fill in the gap. And the same thing, I'm building two, mix of one-bed and two-bed units on the upper floors and those all stack for floors 2, 3 and 4. The roof plan shows the mechanical system, the roof screen. Uh, the roof plan shows the mechanical system, uh, the roof screen, which is proposed as photovoltaic panels um and the heat pump systems for the heating, cooling and domestic hot water. Building three is along West Street. Uh, it's perpendicular to Atkins. Again, we tried to align that with the front of Atkins. Uh, keep the circulation, uh vehicular circulation aligned. Um, and you, as you can see here, the ground floor of building three, the vast majority of that is non-residential. Um, as we mentioned last time, we're um looking for a tenant for this space. Uh, we would love to try to make this and we've tried to design this accordingly for a childcare tenant, uh, which is a a big need in this community, as is housing. Um, we don't have a tenant yet. Um, we have not gone through all of the uh potential requirements for that potential tenant, but we are looking at the ability to potentially provide outdoor place based on the south um in the sun off of that space that would be accessible underneath the colonade that we've created, that would be a secure way of getting out to that site. Uh, the parking in between the building and West Street would be for commercial uh use, even though it's beyond what we would need to provide. There's an opportunity for potential overlap uh on uh times when the commercial does not need the parking. And the parking to the west of building three is all residential. So there's three rows of of parking and um the drive aisle between those. Uh, you'll see trash out of building three on the south side. That will be aggregated and collected at the hammerhead on the backside of this and allow for the trash and also fire to pull in and back up and and get out of the space. The upper floors of building three are all shown on this plan, which shows a mix of one-bed, one-bed office, two-bed and three-bed units. Uh, as I mentioned previously, every unit in this development has an outdoor um balcony. Um, and the rooftop equipment, all the electric rooftop equipment and elevator penthouse, et cetera, is shown on the roof plan. Uh, this is a plan that we have put together to show and clarify height as it's measured in the bylaw and with a unique site that has so many different frontages and so many different streets and so much grade. So we've shown the elevations that are uh that we do break out uh from a height standpoint in pink and try to show how those relate to uh Rambling, how they relate to Bay, how they relate to Gould, Lanin and West Street, et cetera. So it's a key for these following elevation si- slides that show uh the four-story buildings, what the average grade is at each of those elevations in order to define it per the bylaw and uh how the buildings stack up relative to uh the grade that obviously changes across the site. You will see uh in the middle row, C one, you'll see uh most of that grade shown off. This is the north side of building one and the north side of building two. You'll see the grade that really drops off between Rambling and uh Gould. Here are the other elevations on uh building three uh that show the street view facing West Street, which has the glazing on the ground floor underneath the colonade and uh the other elevations around the building. Uh, we were requested to show a site section that cuts along Bay Road, um, which we've provided. Uh, there's three different photos on the bottom. There's the Gould Bay intersection. There's the Rambling Bay intersection, and then there's a shot of Applewood as it sits on Bay Road. Uh, we're trying to show this building between Atkins and Applewood. Obviously Atkins is is lower, uh closer to the roundabout where the grade's down at two sixty. Atkins is much higher. Uh, and the first floor of Atkins is up at three twenty. Um, so you can see how this, these three buildings would sit between Atkins and Applewood, and then we uh showed the, you know, the uh hollow oak range in the background. Uh, units, uh, as they are currently in terms of a one-bed and office, a one-bed, a one-bed and office, a two-bed and a three-bed, uh, just showing how each of those units interacts with the balcony and a basic bedroom. Uh, kitchen, dining, living, bathroom way out. And then materiality uh as proposed, so as as stated, a mass timber construction that uh transitioned to hybrid mass timber on the upper floors, all the units will have exposed wood ceilings. Um, the siding as proposed is uh Luna wood, which is a uh Nordic uh wood that is treated thermally uh to elongate its life and provide for um um a more solid uh stain color for an extended period. So it shows the um thermally modified ash as it's raw after twelve months and then when it's fully weathered. So it goes from the brown to the uh gray. And then a couple of material shots that show uh how we'd like to express those glue and timbers uh on the exterior. Um, and how we would treat those with, uh, they'd have exterior rated glues and exterior rated finishes. Uh, this is a quick uh uh representation showing the depth of the facade. So uh we have, uh, each building has a uh corridor. When you come out of your unit, you look at either end, it's glass at either end, so you can see outside. Breaks down the scale of the units into individual volumes and then use the integration of the balconies within that volume and then a layered uh set of cladding systems um that are also a result of our energy codes that have a lot of excellent uh ins- insulation, albor, the sheathing uh to create a varied pattern and depth in the facades. And then this is the landscape plan, um, as it stands, showing the connection between Lanin and Rambling here with parking on the north side, parallel parking on the south side. Um, building three with the parking on either side and then the planting around the periphery uh with the wetlands between here, uh between the two parcels and the three buildings. And then also the retaining walls that are required in order to support the stormwater infrastructure. So as I mentioned previously, the uh groundwater here is very close to the surface. Uh, the site is currently undeveloped. Uh, the mass regs require no additional outflows uh through development. So the amount of below-grade stormwater retention that's going to be required for any redevelopment of of the site is extremely extensive. And in a site with high groundwater, the locations available to do that are extremely limited. So we're limited to this portion in between buildings two and three, which you'll see uh a little later on the civil, and then underneath the parking uh to the east of building three. Those are the only spots on these two sites that can take below-grade stormwater retention that will be required for anybody to revell these sites. This is a uh just a blow up of the landscape plan uh on the between buildings one and two with the outdoor amenity space, which is a fence long dog run and and play structure area. Terraces going down and the planting along the parking and the woo nerf. Uh, this is the landscape plan uh on building three and showing the paving uh along Lanin and uh the planting around the perimeter. Uh, the civil drawings, I'll try to go quickly. Um, again, this is showing, this is the civil plants, showing the flagged wetlands, showing the two different sites. Always a key. It'll break down into individual sites. This is existing. You can see all the topo, all the grade from west to east drops down extensively, especially in that corner between Bay and Gould. Um, and you'll also see here, there's existing gas, uh Berkshire Gas Infrastructure on the northwest site uh side of the site, which influences our ability to place the building and how close we can get there. And there's also existing utility poles uh that are on the property, actually, uh without easement. But uh the ability to move those across the street is extremely limited, if not impossible, based on electrical uh needs and costs associated with that. Uh, you'll also see the wetlands and then on the land, on the Gould, on the land inside, excuse me, you'll also see the existing topography as it pitches from uh west to east down towards the existing Atkins uh sign and the intersection with West Street. Here are the buildings and the site coverage shown on site for the uh Gould side. Um, it also shows the uh approximate locations of the below-grade infrastructure for stormwater. Again, same thing with uh building three and the land inside with the parking, uh, the paving and the rough layout of the uh below-grade infrastructure. Here's the actual cul-de-sacs and the number of of devices that will be required. Uh, how we're going to get the below gray, uh, get the stormwater to the infiltration, to the treatment and infiltration uh areas. Uh, same thing on building three on the land inside. Uh, where the catch basins are going to be, how the piping takes place and how we handle all the grades and groundwater and et cetera, to make, to try to make that work. Um, and back to the rendering that we have above, and as you can see here, we've got uh the parking that is to the west of building three. That is where our stormwater would go um for that portion of the site. And then this whole corner where we've got uh retaining walls and plantings and a bunch of fill that we're going to have to bring in after we remove, remove all the lead arsenic soil is the other location where the uh stormwater below-grade retention will fit in and um, this is the last rendering and I will try to stop there and be able to answer any questions that uh board may have.
All right. Thank you, Kyle. Why don't you uh stop the share for the moment? Okay, board members, um. So we have at the moment forty-one attendees in the public. I'm sure that most of them want to make a comment tonight. So um, what I think I'd like to do is start off with board questions about the proposal itself. So not talking about your opinions about it. Uh, but just what questions you need to know to understand the proposal? And um, once we do that, uh, then we will go to public comment. Um, given, I mean, we'll see how many people raise their hands, but it's quite possible that I will ask for maybe two minutes of comments rather than three minutes of comments, just to, so we're not here too late tonight. Um, I will also say, uh, Kyle, you have not completed your uh Conservation Commission review and the hearing as far as I know. Um, so I don't expect us to vote on this this evening. I think we will be continuing this hearing. And
And just
Yes.
I was just gonna, we, we had a site visit with Concom, our previous site. Our previous Concom hearing was not able to go forward because they didn't have a quorum. Uh, so we've been rescheduled to next week. So our hearing with Concom is next week.
Okay, great. All right. So is everybody okay with that approach? All right. So questions about the proposal itself? Anybody on the board have questions? Jesse.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, Kyle, maybe you said it and I missed it. Um, did you show us the split of proposed unit sizes?
Uh, I did not show you that. Um, and I'll have to pull that up in terms of number of units and Yep, I can, I can pull that up and get that too.
And likewise, I guess I'm wondering, do you have rent, rents in mind at this point or no idea like what we're talking about?
Uh, we don't have rents, but I can definitely get you the numbers.
Quickly just to jump in, the unit counts are in the development application report. So there's forty-five one-bedroom, sixty-eight two-bedroom and twenty-seven three-bedroom. Unless that's changed, that's what.
That's, that's correct. And then seventeen of those are affordable. So there's uh six one-beds that are affordable. There's eight two-beds that are affordable. And then there's three, three-beds that are affordable.
All right. You all set, Jesse? Okay, Bruce. Bruce, you are still muted.
In the development application report on that, uh, just as Kyle was stating, the number, I think uh the development application report uh double states the number of two-bedroom units at eight hundred square foot and sixty percent of AMI. Um, so I think one of those lines should be uh uh eliminated. I think, uh, I'm trying to think of the questions that for 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 clarity here. I think that Kyle, you, you gave us a, 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 a drawing that showed in detail how the uh building heights were calculated on each facade. Um, and you've asked for a uh, uh, through footnote A that uh we, uh, that we would uh prove uh a height of uh increase to forty-nine point eight uh feet. Can I, can we uh therefore assume that the uh the calculated maximum height from all of what you did is forty-eight, is forty-nine point eight? In other words, the number that's in the development board is correct, correct. I just want to make sure of that because of the complexity that uh we know is associated with figuring out what the actual height is here and I guess what the maximum average height is, and therefore that's the number that you are asking us to look at. I think we should be very clear that that's the correct, and I don't know whether it's a question for you, Nate, or whether it's a question for Kyle, but I want to be sure that that's the right number.
Kyle?
Yep, real quick on the units and the two beds, uh Bruce, there are sixty percent AMI and eighty percent AMI. So um, there should be four of each, uh, just to be
That's correct. And and uh there are, there are two lines in, in, this is in our development application report from the staff. Uh, there are two times is the statement that there are uh four two-bedroom units at sixty percent AMI, and I think only one of them needs to be there.
One's eighty.
And that was double counted.
Yeah. There, there is an eighty there as well. It's not a, it's not a typo. It's just a, it's just
Okay. Okay. And then as it relates to height, I, uh, we put a lot of time in to try to get it correct, Bruce, as best we could. I would defer to Nate if we've not done that correctly. Um, trying to work with the average height on each of the facades as it relates to the bylaw, which is the average height of finished grade on the street side of the structure. Um, so I believe the forty-nine eight is correct and I would obviously defer to uh Nate or somebody else if uh they knew better.
I, I, I will take the answer, Nate, that it is okay and that I just want to make sure that uh because I know it's a, it's A, it's an issue. It's a special request of of a, uh, based on footnote A and it's complicated. So I just want to highlight that forty-nine point eight is what we've been asked for and and that's the right answer. Um, i- i- if I could go on with a couple more questions, Doug?
Sure, Bruce.
I'm, this, this site is uh, is concerning for parking. Um, only because it's, we're asked to reduce it. I think I understand why, uh, because we've had this discussion before, but um, there's a couple of uh considerations related to parking, uh, there was three of them. First is that I think we're inclined, or I am inclined to uh figure that the applicant is making a bet on the amount of parking, which is, uh, the bet is that this is the optimum amount. The concern, of course, is that on this site, um, you can't just build more parking because it's such a difficult site to work with. So the two follow-up questions would be, um, do we know what fraction of Hampshire College students are housed on campus? In other words, um, there's a sense that if this is going to serve as uh to some degree of housing Hampshire College students, then it's a reasonable assumption that they might not have a car or if they did, it would not, not be more than one. So that would, that kind of use would validate the the, the lower uh allocation of parking. And the second is the uh, the willingness of uh the Abata Atkins to accept what I know Ron LaVerdia has uh done in uh uh South Amherst fairly constantly for quite a few years is, 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 is combining um, a fair amount of uh commercial uh with retail and uh expecting that the parking gets kind of double used so that there's some daytime parking, uh, some nighttime parking of what would be uh a commercial use parking. And you're not proposing that so much on this site, I don't suppose, but we've got the uh Atkins site right next door and, and I know that you've had at least ten iterations of your thirty uh involving Atkins. So I guess the question is, do you have any sense that the Abata is willing to act as a kind of a contingency or a fallback? And do you have any arrangement or prospect of arrangements with the, that Abata to uh give some safeguard to uh your bet as to this is the right amount of parking for your development? I think I'll stop there, Doug.
Okay, Bruce, Kyle, parking question.
Sure. Um, so we've got a hundred and eighty-seven parking spaces on site. We've got a hundred and forty units and we've got twelve thousand square feet of uh non-residential commercial. Um, so we've got a hundred and forty of those parking spaces, which are allocated to the hundred and forty uh apartments. So every apartment gets a parking space, which we feel very confident in will not affect leasing of these apartments. Obviously, if we don't lease them, we can't pay the taxes and pay the mortgage. Um, so we're confident that one parking space per unit is sufficient to lease the units and um, we also have the ability for another forty-seven spaces on on the proposed property to look for things like Bruce mentioned, which is some overlap between commercial without having to go to Atkins uh and uh and ask them about similar. So our, our proposal is to take care of all parking on site and to manage it accordingly. Um, and as we put in the management plan, uh, every residential space would be rented uh at a fee to be determined and And would structure our enforcement, so that if there is a resident in a non-residential space, they will be towed. And we wanted to make that very clear to Atkins. We don't want to impose on Atkins in any way, shape, or form with our parking. We don't want to impose on rambling. And so there's enforcement mechanisms for parking outside of the site. And I think we would be open to looking at using our commercial spaces on site for both commercial and residential if we saw the need arise.
All right. Bruce, are those?
Oh, I'll let Karen go.
Okay. Thank you Bruce. Karen?
I was just informed by Ken Rosenthal, who called me, that the Hampshire's college students are a hundred percent required to live on campus, so they would not be tenants. And I think that from the comments of everyone that, that I've read that were excited about this, that the need of housing is for families or workers or staff who have to go far away and have long commutes and because they can't find appropriate housing in Amherst. And so my question is, Kyle, I know it's impossible to know the rents, but judging from the other buildings that Archipelago has built, I know when they came up, the rent, and of course, it's a new construction, but they were higher per square foot than anything that Amherst had seen. And consequently, people, landlords raised their, I mean, I think that the rents in Amherst significantly went up once your buildings were built. And that's a concern that I have here. My concern also is.
So Karen, what's your question about, about the proposal?
Question is if the marketing or the, the approach of design in this building is going to be significantly sort of more inviting to a population of families and workers than, than the other buildings? Or is this going to be pretty much the same approach?
All right. Kyle, do you have?
Yeah, I would, I would, I would first take issue with a analysis that says that adding new apartments increases the cost of apartments in a municipality. So I, I do not believe that is the case at all. And I think that if Archipelago disappeared and had never built the buildings downtown, the average home price in Amherst would still be seven hundred thousand dollars, if not higher. So from, our bylaw is, has created a situation where the average home price requires five thousand dollars a month in mortgage and taxes. We don't have any apartments that rent for that much. So we're operating in a place that is housing-starved. And the origin of the high home prices are our bylaw, not the developers. I appreciate Ken Rosenthal giving notes. Ken Rosenthal has expressed some of those same things to me. As I've said to Ken, and as I will say to any person, if you want to find an apartment in Amherst, there are many, many, many ways to find that apartment on Amherst. The vast majority of our tenants find us online. And we are advertised and we are available to find online. If any one of us on this call was a, were the people that are contacting us now to, to rent apartments because they are recently placed in a grad program or have taken a position at one of the schools, et cetera, and they hit in the spring, they absolutely can find our apartments. Our apartments, other than the Olympia Place projects, have a mix of people within each of them. And as I said to Ken, and I'll say to everybody else, the, I've always encouraged people to go to one of our downtown parcel properties and watch the people that come and go in the buildings and point out to me which ones you'd rather not have living in your community. Because I think that's where this type of language kind of leads us. So I think that this project will provide housing as the other eleven thousand units in Amherst provide. Fifty-five to sixty percent of those units have always been non-owner occupied rental because of who we are as a community in Amherst and who we are started back in the eighteen hundreds. And quickly thereafter had Amherst College here, and quickly thereafter had Mass Aggie here. And has the largest, you know, higher ed consortium in the country, most established, and created a fifth college out of four back in the seventies. So our, our lifeblood is higher education in this community. And I think that this project will rent to people as the other sixty-five hundred non-owner occupied rentals in Townwell.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to Fred. Questions about the content of the proposal?
Yeah, I just, I was interested in Karen's statement that Hampshire insists that all of its students reside on campus. That would be a change. I can tell you as a landlord for fifty-three years that I have rented to Hampshire College students on numerous occasions. So if that is, if that's, if they now have changed their policy, then that is a significant change.
All right. Thank you Fred. Bruce?
Clarify that it said unless they are married or have children, they are required, this, this is what I've just heard from Hampshire College.
Okay, listen, we're not talking about the proposal right now. Let's.
The reason for that question was I wanted to see, it had impact in parking implications, I thought. My next question would be the commercial space. And I remember from our last go around, and I think you mentioned it briefly here Kyle, but we discussed it a little more previously. I think I understand that the aggregate of the first floor space achieves the thirty percent minimum in the three buildings on average, but for various reasons, which I think I understand and appreciate. You've decided that you would prefer to concentrate greater than thirty in some spaces and less than thirty in others. And it gives the impression that we've actually got one of those three buildings, which is actually an apartment building because it has almost no commercial space. I think I'm okay with the notion that the, this is achieving the bylaw requirement because it averages over three buildings. But, and this is a question for you Nate, I think, or between the two of you Kyle and Nate. I want to be sure that, that this is the intent. And secondly Nate, that as a board, we are able to approve a mixed-use building with this kind of average as opposed to literal thirty percent in each of the buildings. I'd like to know the answer to that either now or before we close the hearing, so that we can make sure that if we are approving this, that we are not approving something that is in contravention of the bylaw, no matter how obliquely.
Okay.
Yeah, no, the, the bylaw allows this as part of the standards and conditions for mixed-use buildings. And so the way the building commissioner would interpret it and apply it and how it would, has been applied is in this scenario. So, you know, there is no apartment building. If there was no, non, you know, it's really three mixed-use buildings in aggregate, the thirty percent is met. So that's, that meets the bylaw.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Not seeing any more hands from the board.
And if we're. Oh, that, if I may ask one more.
Go ahead Bruce.
Thank you. This is another question that was asked last time, and then therefore we should put it back for the record. There's going to be a bunch of these questions, I think. But the fire department report is the kind of report that says the fire department would require, and then it lists a lengthy set of expectations that the fire department has. And I think, but I can't absolutely recall Kyle, that I asked last time that you could commit to satisfy. First of all, have you seen the report of the fire chief?
I've seen it and we've met with Chris Bascom to discuss.
And so can you tell us that you can commit to satisfying all of those requirements? Or that you, are there any that you can't, you can anticipate convincing the fire chief to change his report?
I think we were able to satisfy anything that Chris Bascom needs on site.
Thank you.
All right, Jesse?
Thanks Doug. So I guess Kyle, I have a question about the commercial percentage. And the question is, what's, what's the barrier to doing more commercial? So you're clearly sort of going through contortions to meet just the thirty percent minimum. That's what's required in the bylaw. So if we are to grant you this fourth floor, is there a financial barrier? Is there some other issue where you couldn't do sixty percent commercial to truly make it a town center? I mean, your, your whole pitch was about family housing, which I'm not sure agree fits Amherst so well. But if that's the real goal, and if we want to develop this as a town center, which is possible at this site, what, what's limiting you from doing more commercial? Is there a limit? From your perspective?
Good question. I would say that there's a couple of different layers to this. The first is the site itself. There's so much grade even along Gould that we can't put any handicap parking spaces there because they have so much cross-slope. So the reason we've taken the path that we've taken by having a vast majority of building three be non-residential on the ground floor, half of building two be non-residential, and a portion of building one be non-residential is really related to the grade. And where we could effectively have grade that is in and out and works with a standard, you know, commercial setup. And then trying to look at where we would want to put that commercial so it has visibility. Obviously, Bay Road and West Street have, have traffic. Gould and Lanin do not have a lot of traffic. So if you and I were partners in some retail business, where would we want to put our business and put up a sign and make sure that people saw us and knew to come shop with us? Which is why we wanted to make sure we turn the building and face to West Street, one sixteen as much as we could to give that visibility, and then do the same thing along Gould to give as much visibility to that street. What happens with Gould is that as we do that, the building starts to fall off on, on the grade on, as you get towards Gould and Bay, which results in, to Bruce's point, the highest elevation, the forty-nine foot eight. It's on, because we're fighting the grade over there. And at that end, we run out of spaces where we can go out from the ground floor out to parking and out to the sidewalk. It starts to get wrapped up into the retaining walls. So the first answer to your question is the thirty percent was an effort to get the thirty percent, just with the restrictions of the site. Assuming that the new, new construction for new retail would justify the rents that we would get out there. As people know, we went before the ZBA a year and a half ago to seek a hardship waiver to look at ten percent retail instead of thirty percent, based on the history of the bylaw and how it's kind of was intentionally downtown based. And this is obviously a different setup out next to Atkins. And Atkins is a wonderful retailer as it is. And that was denied. And the other part of this is, it's a subsidy as it is. The ability for us to generate the rents out of new retail relative to cost of new construction is underwater. So the, the rent that we would have to charge in order to justify new construction is quite high. So outside of the grading, it's also the market demand and market rents that lead to either support or not support the cost of new construction.
All right. All set Jesse? I do see that we're coming up on eight o'clock and it might be, we may want to have a break at some point. Karen?
Kyle, I, I, we really all hope that this succeeds and we're, we're pushing for a successful and, and so many things about this are positive. I wonder if you've thought about commercial, which is a little bit different than what we've seen so far in your other buildings. And that is, that it's just something with lots of little shops that people maybe share, so that you'd have booths like, kind of like Thorne's Market. Have you thought about something where there's a flexible? I mean, the people in that area want, are, are excited about having lots of different businesses. And we miss small shops that sell music or health food things. And, and I'm just wondering, can you, instead of one big thing at the bottom or some of them, consider having something you walk in and then there are just a lot of small little booths that can share that, and that might make it commercially viable?
So could this be divisible?
I, I appreciate that and absolutely. Each of the spaces as shown are not divided. The grade inhibits the ability to divide the retail space in building two because there's a seven-foot grade change between the slab heights. But building three could be divisible in so much as additional storefront doors or occupancy as it relates to bathrooms and egress distances, et cetera, would come into play. So the, are, we would, we would like to have a singular tenant that maybe hits a bigger need that is very complementary to Atkins. We could see this turn into something where we have a number of small tenants that also are complementary to Atkins. So we could divide particularly the space in building three and building two. Potentially, we could split it in half, and then the space in building three is already, you know, small enough to support a small business.
You mean building one?
Sorry, I mean building one. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Not seeing any hands at this point from board members. We are right at eight o'clock. And so why don't we take our five-minute break now? And we will come back and come, go to public comment. So members of the public, stay with us. We'll be back after a short break. All right, the time is 8:06. Please turn on your camera at least and let, let us know you're back when you, when you come on back to your desk. Okay, looks like most people are back. We've got at least one left to come into view. There we go. Okay, so Bruce, I see your hand. Let's go ahead and get your question out of the way and then we'll go through public comment.
Yes, this is a clarification of something or a repetition, perhaps a clarification of something that was said before, but I think it might be relevant before we head to public comment. The last time Fred noted that the lease had provisioned for a rental by room. And I think Kyle acknowledged that that was a holdover from a previous project and so forth, and that that would not be the case. I think as I have read some of the public comments that we've seen in the last month or so, that people are concerned about this. I think it might help if we can dispel that that's not indeed an intention and that was misstated in the original lease document. If that's correct, Kyle, you could tell us and we could avoid having, people having those concerns.
That's correct. Yep, that's correct. And all these units will be leased by the unit.
Great. Thank you, Bruce. Okay, members of the public. I'm seeing 45 members of the public at the moment. Now is the time to raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment during tonight's hearing for this project or about this project. Depending on how many of hands I see, I may shorten the allotment of time for each commenter. So please do think about how to, how to make your point efficiently. Many, many, we have received many written public comments. And I can assure you that I, that I read them all. I hope all the board members do. So now is the time to put your hand up. So far I have six hands.
Mr. Marshall, can I ask a question, please?
Yes.
I'm hoping Nate, that if you could bring people in, I will manage the time clock. Are you able to do that tonight?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
All right. So just so everyone's clear, I do not expect us to vote and close the hearing tonight. So there will be an additional hearing. So if you don't, if you think of some other comments to make, or you want to make another comment in the next hearing, that will be a possibility. So I'm hoping that we can get through the public comment within, say, an hour this evening. And thus far, we have seven hands up. And I guess why don't we just go ahead and start? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, why don't we start with three minutes as the maximum? I'd like to keep us to three minutes. I will, would like to cut everyone off after three minutes. And, but you don't have to spend three minutes. If you can make your point in two minutes, please try to do that. Okay, Nate, would you bring over Gustavo Oliviera? Gustavo, welcome. Give us your name, your street address and your comment.
My name is Gustavo Oliveira. I live at 68 Country Corners, which is right behind Hampshire Village. And I want to thank you, Mr. Marshall and the other members of the board for holding this other hearing and also for holding back on the vote for now. So we hear from other con commentary, we should discuss things further. I also want to begin by stating very clearly that I am in favor of developing our village center as a true village town center. I also want to state that I am in favor of addressing our housing crisis, especially focusing on the need for families. Families afford, you know, the cost of raising a child, the things that Calum pointed out in the beginning of this presentation. However, based on my understanding of this project and I've been accompanying it very closely since before I went up to this ZBA, this plan does not accomplish these goals. In fact, it makes it worse. I am concerned about the, the distribution of units. 32% are just one bedroom, only 19% are three bedroom, and there's 0% of four bedroom units. Thinking about cost of raising children, a family of four and such. It is not addressed by this. In response to questions by Mr. Bruce Colton, by Ms. Karen Winter, Mr. Jerry Major, you know, Cal admitted that this is not really going to be rented primarily to working families. People that might need to address this cost of raising a child, of having a family of four in our town. It does seem to me concerning that the response to Mr. Major's question about why is there a restriction on more commercial on the site? I imagine a quite, a response to a question like, why not have more larger units versus smaller ones will be in part because of you know, the, the market rents. This is very, very concerning. You know, what families that are going to come here, stay here, raise their children here need is not just to rent your in, your out one bedroom apartments, it's to be able to purchase and live in a place much more for a long term. I'm also concerned about the explanation that the very topography of the site creates this kind of hardship. We heard this argument at the ZBA meeting and it turned out that actually we could put a building off by West Street after all, unlike the previous plan for ZBA. So I'm, I'm concerned that if the board were to approve the fourth floor going above the size without putting conditions on units for sale on larger units, we'd be really not working towards our goal of developing the village center and addressing the housing crisis.
Thank you, Gustavo. All right. Nate? Let's bring over Jerah Smith. Hello, Jerah. Please give us your name and your street address and you have three minutes.
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Jerah Smith, 15 Alisson Drive. Thank you, board members, for having this hearing tonight. I am a, I'm a resident, I'm a homeowner, I'm a dad. I'm also a professional housing affordability consultant. I work across the country with towns and counties and really neighborhoods of all sizes to figure out ways to make housing more accessible for people. And so I, so it's, it's my, it's my job being able to try and identify what makes a good project and what makes a bad one. And I cannot express my stronger support for this project. I, it, it, there are so many communities where I would, that I work with, where I would beg to see a development like this come in. I, 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 I had something else I was planning on saying tonight, but after seeing the renderings and after seeing the thought put into it, this, this is an exceptionally good project. It is an exceptionally good development. It offers 140 new housing opportunities for people in Amherst that wouldn't be able to live here otherwise, 17 of which are below market. The parking qualifications, I think, are more than adequate to accommodate those apartments, especially the ones that are one bedroom. I certainly understand the desire to see more larger unit sizes, you know, but think about it in another way in terms of a four bedroom apartment would take away four individual units. And frankly, that four bedroom apartment would also probably be astronomically unaffordable for parents. I just have, I just want to express my full throated support for this project. If we believe in economic diversity, if we believe in racial diversity, if we believe in generational diversity, this is the kind of project that you want to see going up in your community. So with that, I just want to thank you all for giving me the time to speak and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jerah. Nate, our next speaker is Janet Keller. Hello, Janet. Please give us your name, remind us of your address and you have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Janet Keller. I live in North Amherst on Pulpit Hill Road. And I'm pleased to see that Kyle has shown some flexibility here, both in terms of the variety of the kinds of units. I too would love to see at least one or two larger four bedroom units tucked in there if possible, but I also appreciate the retail on the lower floors. And there I would hope that an effort would be made to attract a tenant that would offer the kinds of convenience products, dishwashing liquid and clothing, soap and Kleenex and that sort of thing that that the other store does not offer, that Atkins does not offer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Janet. All right, Nate, let's bring over Sherri Wilson. Hello, Sherri. If you could unmute, give us your name and your street address. You have three minutes.
Okay. I'm Sherri Wilson. I live at 4 Macintosh Drive, which is in Upper Orchard. I support the concept of mixed use housing and commercial at Atkins Corner. I do not support this particular project primarily because of its size on a site that has so much wetlands and the height. Before Archipelago started building apartment buildings downtown, the standard height of buildings in downtown Amherst was three stories, which seemed appropriate. All of the Archipelago projects downtown are four stories according to permit from planning board. So Atkins Corner is located in the most rural section of Amherst. And it is not downtown Amherst. It is supposed to be a village center, not a downtown. And four stories is inappropriate. Three stories would be fine. It's just too darn tall and too darn big. I am concerned that the traffic study that was done concentrated in the analysis on West Street. I live on a street that goes onto West Bay Road. It is very difficult during commuter times to get onto West Bay Road. And the backup from the rotary can be substantial. It can be almost a rambling road. And the traffic has been so increased in recent years that this summer, the town is going to have to spend a million dollars ahead of schedule to reconstruct West Bay Road because of the traffic on this street. And any project at Atkins Corner will add to the traffic. I'm also a bit confused by what seems to be a wonderful idea to have a childcare center. But Kyle admitted at the last hearing that they really hadn't done much research on what was required to open a childcare center. And it seemed to me that they decided to propose a childcare center to make it seem that this was going to be family housing. And I am very skeptical that this will be family housing. Hampshire College needs to sell this property. I understand that. I support them. They do not need a housing for students. The only students in town who needs housing.
Sherri, I'm sorry. I think your time is up. Nate? Can we bring over Maria Kopecky? Hello, Maria. Please give us your name, your address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Doug. Thank you. Maria Kopecky, 65 Country Corners Road. I too, as other people have mentioned, support development of this property, but this project is simply not the right one. It is too big and there's a couple of reasons for that. There is going to be, the number of vehicles that this project would generate is going to be more than this area can handle. Certainly 140 parking spaces for 140 units is inadequate. Certainly, one hundred forty parking spaces for one hundred and forty units is inadequate even by the the zoning standards. It says you're supposed to have two for every for every unit, and that's two hundred and sixty-two bedrooms. There's going to be. Apartments that where there are more than one drivers, more than one cars. People are going to have visitors. You're gonna need a lot more spaces for that many units, that many bedrooms. The other problem is the distribution. As the ZBA noted. Uh when the the proposal came there last year, the building was in the northwest corner and all the parking was in the southeast corner. This is doing the same thing in in a way. There seventy percent of the bedrooms are in the northwest parcel, a hundred and thirteen units. But only thirty-five percent of the parking spaces are there, sixty spaces, so it's completely reversed. That doesn't make sense. You're going to have people, if half of the people who live in buildings one and two. Are going to have to walk all the way down to building three across a parking lot to get there. That's not going to work. Um you've got a very difficult site and you've got a footprint problem. Half of the acreage that the seven and a half acres that Kyle mentions is taken up. Within a hundred feet of um wetland border. I mean, if you look at the map. There there is very little buildable. You also have the problems that you've mentioned about grade. And what it means is that you have to dial back the building that you put there. I would love for there to be apartments there. I would love for there to be commercial, but. It is this project is trying to jam a square peg into a round hole. It's just not gonna work. Um a lot of the the thought and the. How this has been approached has been to kind of treat this as a space as if it's downtown. Part of the 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 uh traffic study showed that. They were talking about, oh, there's thirty percent. Of the folks that live here are going to be do using basically public transportation. Anybody who lives in this area can tell you that you are far from things and if you are going to need a vehicle to get there. Um and uh even the the sample lease that we talked about. The did it did it say, oh, is he gonna rent by the room or by the the unit? That's all well and good, but if you look at that, it it kind of it belies. The thinking that you're not thinking about the area that it's in. This is a specific area down here in South Amherst. And I wish you would please listen to the people who live here that to tell you, this is what you can do to make a successful project. Um for example, in that lease, it talks about um uh it refers to have getting downtown parking permits and metered parking. You gotta think differently about this location. We could do something really great here. But it's not this project. It has to be modified. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. All right, Nate. Um next person is Ken Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ken Rosenthal. I live at fifty-three Sunset Avenue. This project needs to serve the people we want to live in Village Center, people who want to live. And work in Amherst year-round, and that would be people who work. At the university, at Hampshire College, at Amherst College, in Town Hall, Police Department and Fire Department folks. And people who register their cars in Amherst, and like me, someone who first came to Amherst to work at Hampshire College and rented an apartment. I would love to rent that one and then walk across the street to my office. And like me, someone who came back to live in Amherst after I finished my work and came back to retire. And I have Hampshire College alumni who have talked to me about wanting to live back in Amherst where they went to college. So this place could serve those people and it should be marketed only to those people, not to students. So one of the things I hope the chair, I hope the uh planning board will do is require and review the marketing materials. Including the website and see that this is marketed not to students in any way, but to those who we want to live year-round in Amherst. Live here, work here, register their cars here. I think you need to review that plan in six months and a year and eighteen months and make that a requirement. Of the permit. As the question about rents has come up and surely Kyle knows what rents he's going to charge or is likely to charge. He knows what rent he's going to charge in September for his existing buildings. They would be the same here. There are three elements of costs that he has to deal with. One of the current expenses like trash and electricity and property taxes. The other is the amortization of the costs of the money he needs to have to pay for the construction. And the other is profit. Profit is a variable number, and so is amortization because it depends on how long. And how short you want to have your amortization period go. So there are opportunities for Kyle to adjust the rents accordingly. To meet the needs of the people who we want to live there, people who will be living here year-round, working here. Might be our policeman, might be our fireman, just as it was fifty years ago when Hampshire College was founded. And police, fire, and Hampshire staff and faculty all lived in town and weren't driven elsewhere. We can do this if Kyle is reasonable about the profit he expects to take and the amortization period he expects to use. And I hope the planning board will find a way to review this with him and make sure. That his objectives are the same as ours, which is property for year-round folks. I want to just add a correction to the question about Hampshire College. Hampshire has more than enough. Units now for the size of the college it's going to be when it reaches full size in a few years. It expects its students to live there and pay rent there because it needs the rent. The students at Hampshire who will not live there are older students, married students, students with disabilities that require them to live elsewhere. But otherwise, they will all live there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me speak.
Certainly, Ken. Thank you. All right, the last person is uh Jennifer Hicks Hickson. Hello, Jennifer.
Uh good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak and having this hearing. Uh I'm. From twelve Autumn Lane at Hampshire Village. Uh I've been in a butter for uh over twenty-five years to this property, so. You know, I think it's great for the board to listen for the perspective of the people that will be most affected and then actually live here. Um I do know that zoning laws were created for a reason, so that. Buildings become appropriate for the size, space, and location where they're going to be. Um I know that uh our property manager is very concerned. Uh and has spoken to a DPW worker about the water table and actually the. Uh area being able to support such a large building. It's just interesting that Kyle even talked about struggling with site restrictions because of the grading of the property and, you know, wasn't. Able to add more commercial use because of the unusual grading that's required and uh. I think that's just an illustration of this building is not appropriate uh for this space. I'd like to address a traffic study, so I walk my dogs every day and I assure you that. Uh there is a traffic problem uh on all of the streets surrounding this property, uh no matter which one you pick. Uh and if a study said otherwise, um there is uh that is a faulty study. Uh the conservation area, so we have uh wetlands, bear, deer, fox, birds. That will be decimated by a project of this size. Um Hampshire College, if they need housing, I think there's a lot of property uh on many sites surrounding uh the university. That could house some of their faculty and uh people that want to live in town. Uh not forcing uh somebody else's words, a square peg into a round hole, which seems to be what's happening. Uh at this corner. So um I would like to say that um. Development of that land is eminent and I think, you know, a partial use project would be. Fantastic to have the end of our street. Um with the proper fit, proper parking, proper use, not a big building. Um that uh is struggling from the beginning to find its way. Uh so thank you very much for the time um to speak this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. Um had two new hands show up. Nate, let's bring over Paul Juris.
Uh thank you, I'm Paul Juris. I am at twenty-two Macintosh Drive. I'm also the chair of the Board of Managers at Upper Orchard Two. Uh we've had a lot of conversations, obviously, in our community. And I think I can speak for most of our residents when I say that we are in favor of a project here. We think it's the right thing to do for the town of Amherst uh in the community at large. But we really feel that the surrounding communities, everyone who spoke here, and we all know each other, frankly. Um we are stakeholders in this prog- in this project as much as anybody and. Our concerns really revolve around the increased population density that. Is projected because of the extra floors on the buildings. Um and what that's going to do to the quality of life of the people around here. Rambling Road is challenging as it is. Our community has submitted multiple letters to the town. To try to get them to repair Rambling Road. Those letters have largely been ignored. We're concerned about the additional traffic along Rambling Road, given that many of the residents along the street are elderly. They're already walking in the street because the sidewalks are broken up uh and almost unpassable. And so now we expect to see increased traffic on the street and evidence of that is, you know, the unfortunate recent accident. Which occurred on um the other side of West Street over the notch. Forced traffic on Rambling Road and it was backed up from Bay Road all the way back uh to one sixteen. Uh it becomes untenable. The traffic along Bay Road is sometimes scary. We know that there's a flashing light and crossing across from the Carl. Um I walk my dog across that path. Almost daily and it's remarkable how many drivers ignore the flashing lights and just drive through. So when you have this much more automobile traffic passing on Bay Road. Uh running through these lights with elderly people walking across the street. Uh I'm concerned that it's going to take a tragedy for the town to understand the potential risks. Of building a project of this magnitude. Would ask the town to really reconsider. The density of the population that is going to be built into this or wedged into this, as it seems to us. And I would also ask that you reconsider putting a cut through onto Rambling because I think that would be devastating to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh Nate, how about Peter Straley? Hello, Peter.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. My name is Peter Straley. I'm at sixty-six Country Corners Road. My wife and I have submitted extensive comments to you. And we hope that at some point you'll respond to each and every one of them. I'd like to just highlight one or two right now. Uh recognizing that there are many that need to be addressed. First of all, Kyle has done a great job of. Speaking about the need for housing in Amherst and in Massachusetts. However. This project does not in any way address that. This project, first of all, has numerous non-family housing units. And if it had family housing units, it would recognize that the rest of us who live here in this community. All of us have at least two cars. So parking for a hundred and forty people is wif- woefully inadequate. Secondly, family housing for single-family units makes no sense at all. This is not family housing. Also, the traffic impact study, which I'm sure you may be asking more questions about. Talks about access to Rambling Road and the town engineer. Reviewed this study and said access to Rambling Road should be allowed. That is absolutely absurd. There's nothing in this study that says it should be allowed. And as Paul just mentioned. The Rambling Road is a disaster and access from Rambling Road to West Bay Road is a mess every morning. And just as he said, he walks across the road, we do as well. So we would ask that, given these, the. The.
Sorry, you're breaking up, Peter. Can you try that again?
It must just be my. Or in South Amherst. Um the there's a difficulty of fitting the necessary financial. Return on this development into this particular study. We recommend that it be dialed back. To be something within the existing parameters of the planning board. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Okay, so that was all the public comment that uh appears to be happening tonight. I want to just uh. Clarify a couple of things I heard in those comments. Uh the first is that it most of uh one woman uh said that most of the archipelago projects downtown are five are four stories. And yeah, I think it's accurate to say that most of them are five stories, if not everything. I guess Spring Street may not be five stories, but uh all the rest are five stories, so. That's just a point of clarification. Um one of the recent commenters was uh hoping that we would respond to each of the letters. And I hate to disappoint him, but I don't believe we're gonna be able to do that. Um we will address as many of the issues raised in those comments. As we can get to or that board members feel are worth discussing. But we will not be responding directly to any of the writers of those uh comments. Um so one question for Nate uh that has been a theme through uh all these comments and. Is the level of traffic down on Bay Road in particular? Is the I are the ta- is the town engineer aware of the heavy traffic on Bay Road and? You know, I don't want us to be penalizing this project for a situation that exists. You know, irrespective of whether this project happens. What's the context for how the town is thinking about traffic down here?
Sure, yeah. So you know, the the Public Works is aware of. Um you know, the traffic and what, you know, the disrepair of West Bay Road, and so, you know, they're they've allocated funding to fix it. And so, you know, the prompt, you know, they've received the transmittal for this project and I've emailed them a few times. And so the response from Jason Skills, the town engineer, saying, you know, to keep the connection to Rambling Road. It wasn't prompted by the traffic study, it was prompted by me asking, is that a necessary connection? And so, you know, in in his email, the way he worded it was, you know, kind of responding to my my question. Um knowing that there's there's concerns there from the neighbors and so. You know, the you know, Public Works is is aware. I've asked if there's any concerns with the traffic study. You know, the engineer commented that he didn't appear to have any. Um you know, I I you know, in my development application report, there's some questions about whether or not it did take into account. The wooer connecting Gould Lannan to Rambling and uh you know, if there's some other uh questions about. Did it take into the traffic speed on West Bay Road in terms of uh safe stopping distances? And so I think there are some areas where the traffic study, you know, could could actually be um improved. It's not clear that they, you know, they took a few things into consideration that I think would be important, given. The size of the development and and you know, what we've heard. You know, they took traffic speeds, for instance, on Gould and Lannan, but we know that people travel on Rambling, West Street and and West Bay Road. And so, you know, those speeds necessarily weren't taken into account, knowing that residents from this project are going to be pulling out onto those streets. So I think, you know, there could be some areas where the traffic study, to me, would need to be expanded. But Public Works has been asked to look at it and, you know, so they haven't expressed any concern, right? They.
Yeah, I guess I guess the context or my question's really more about. Has 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 the town thought about, you know, do we need to widen Bay Road? To, you know, two lanes in each direction, or do we need to somehow uh at the boundary with Hadley? You know, create a bunch of speed bumps that tell people, you've come to Amherst and you need to drive thirty-five instead of fifty. Um you know, are there things that the town is thinking about doing for that area? To address some of the traffic issues that the residents have mentioned and um don't have anything to do with the project, but. You know, they're clearly uh influencing the reaction that, gee, we don't want any more people down here because it's just gonna get worse.
So I'm not aware that they they are, you know, and that with the repaving, you know. I've often thought that there could be, right, some traffic calming measures, you know, whether it's splitter islands or other things. You know, a clearly an off-street sidewalk, um, a, a different kind of shoulder. So. You know, I'm not sure what, you know, what the plans will have. Um, so I, you know, I can't say if they have or not.
Okay, alright, so there's nothing that's going to change the traffic situation from the town?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Bruce?
Uh, two questions, uh, both for Kyle. Kyle, the first is, um. And I think I get this from uh perhaps a suggestion or a question or an issue that was raised in the planning. Uh, a development application report prepared by planning staff. Uh, but I think it was a suggestion that. Uh, would you consider uh making the um? The, the, the vehicular passage along the Wunoff uh single directional so that uh you basically enter. From Rambling, but you're not allowed to exit onto Rambling Road. So that would typically, I think, re- reduce the likely. Uh, amount of uh traffic on Rambling Road if you could, uh, if we, if, if that was a, a requirement. Would that be a requirement that would work for you?
Uh, I think we've proposed the extension because we think it would. It's, it's the best planning move we could make. Um, I think if it. If there was a suggestion that we put up big signs that say, you know, enter only, uh, no exit. That, you know, uh, I think would be suboptimal from our standpoint, but it wouldn't. Wouldn't, you know, stop that. I just don't, uh. I think that the, as I said, I think from our standpoint, it would be better to have it, uh, have traffic go both ways, just from a planning standpoint.
Okay, but it sounds like it's not a non-starter and we could think about whether for some reason that might be a workable arrangement and, and. So I'm just bearing that in mind for the moment.
I think it would be signs and enforcement would be the question of how that's enforced.
It would be, uh, you know, basically it would be a one-way street and, you know, one-way streets happen. Uh, North Prospect is a one-way street. People know when you leave CVS, you don't turn the wrong direction. It's a, it's a learned, it's an acquired, well, acquired taste. It's, it's a quiet habit. Um, second.
I also park on a one-way street, this other, out here by the Amherst College dorms, and there's a lot of vehicles going the wrong way on the one-way street.
Uh huh, um, yep. Uh, one more question. Um, the, uh, this is a question I was going to ask last time, but I never gotten around to it. And it's, it has to do with the uh. The screening for your mechanicals, which you said were going to be vertically uh, uh oriented, I mean vertically mounted. Uh, PV panels and that you were using PV panels to screen. And I guess, uh. The, you know, vertical is not optimal, I know, but uh these days, uh. The price of that stuff is lowering and the effectiveness of them is increasing. And so I could see perhaps uh the, on the west and the. South and the north, um, it might work, but are you serious about putting uh PV? Uh, panels to screen the north side of uh vertically on your, it seems that. It, it seems like not a terribly good idea and, and, uh. And rather than have you come back and change that, I mean, is, is, wouldn't you want to put something that looks like a PV panel but isn't on the north side? Or is, is there something I don't know about the economics of all of this?
Uh, I think there's definitely, the panels that will be on the south side will get more light. Uh, the panels further north and. On the east and west side and on the north side will get less. Uh, it wouldn't be zero. And what we're comparing it to is the cost of. Perforated metal siding as an alternative to the PV. So the PV cost has dropped so low that it's comparable to. The cost of what we would provide that obviously would not provide any uh electricity. So. From an ease and from a uniformity of look, um, we would propose the PV panels on all sides. And none of which are, you know, cardinal direct and uh due north uh necessarily. So. We would expect that each of those panels will get some light and it's better than. Uh, perforated metal panels I get, no, uh, that don't generate any electricity.
Oh, well, the world has changed, I guess. That's it for now, Doug.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Board members, other questions? I guess, um, I'll jump in then with a question. Kyle, um. Some of the comments, both writing and tonight have, have sort of uh. Predicted the kinds of people who would rent the units that you're showing. Um, whether they're one-bedroom, one-bedroom with office or two or three bedrooms. Um, have you, in, in your previous proposals? Perceived any sort of stereotype that, you know, this kind of person is renting all my one-bedroom units? Or this type of person is renting all, most of my two-bedroom units? Is that something that you have observed and something that we could, we could all use as a rule of thumb? You're muted.
Yeah, um. I don't think we've observed that. I think that the, as I tried to state earlier. Um, the majority of our housing units are non-owner occupied rentals in our entire community. Um, our community is built around uh our higher education. Um, and higher education is from uh students to faculty, to staff, to grad students, to administration, to. Uh, all the folks that uh work so hard to support all the higher education. Uh, institutions. Some of those have uh spoke on the last hearing. Um, and so we are looking to provide, and I think this is the future of all housing conversations in Amherst because. The future of housing, new housing production in Amherst is inherently multifamily. Inherently within multifamily, they are, we're talking about one-bedroom, two-bedroom and three-bedroom units. Um, so I think that the vast majority of all the housing that we build in this community from this day forward. Uh, will be in a similar situation. And I think that. Uh, I think uh property management, uh, our property management company has done a wonderful job managing our properties. Um, I think they're good neighbors. I think they support the community in, in a lot of ways, and I would expect that this project uh does the same.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Bruce, you, you're back.
Yes, uh, I, I'm thinking about uh how to move this to continuation. But uh, there are a lot of questions and they were, shall we say, second-order questions might be rather technical, rather detailed, important. But many of them in the development application reports, they, they.
Yep.
And, and I'm thinking uh to ask whether Kyle has seen that development application report, or if not, could he? Be made to see it. And then if he could respond to those. Questions, then it would save us a lot of time here if it, uh, if it, if, if he could respond. Um, to, to the bulk of them anyway.
Are you, are you thinking uh during the hearing or, or respond in writing so that we can all see that before we meet?
I was, I was thinking of the latter.
Okay.
Bond in writing, we look at it and any questions arising.
I assume Kyle, you have, you are in possession of the development application report.
Yes, and we could do that.
Alright.
Right. We just got rid of a arrow chat.
Aw, come on, Bruce. Um, Jesse.
Thanks, Doug. Um, I guess I have a few just comments to share with my colleagues on the board and Kyle. I guess I'll start with. I, I, I do agree, Kyle, you gave a great introduction about Massachusetts and the housing need. But in that introduction and basically in all your responses, you're clearly very intentionally not using one word, which is student. That's fine, I understand that. I, I believe this will be majority student rentals. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think that's the reality. That's the reality of our town at the moment. And I think a lot of us are working hard to figure out how to make more family housing. And so. Yes, your introduction fits perfectly aligned with what we want to happen, but I don't think that's realistic right now. And not for this proposal and not at the rents that you're going to have to charge to make it work. Um, and that's really why I'm. When I look at this project, I think it's, it's a great place. To have density and to lean towards a new potential town center. And that's why I'm asking about the increased commercial space. Uh, and my thoughts at this moment are, if we're going to consider allowing the fourth floor, we really need to get more of that commercial opportunity out of it. Uh, because I agree with many of the comments that were made, both this time and the last hearing that. You know, having Atkins there plus one or two other places, maybe a restaurant, who knows what they'll be. Are not sufficient for people to live there and not need a car and not need to travel far distances to get what they need for daily life. Um, so I would really encourage you to think about if there are ways to increase. That goal of making more of a village center with more opportunities for commercial uh development. I also think the, I do think that, I know we've heard from a number of residents about traffic concerns. I also think that probably the traffic study maybe is inadequate, needs to be revisited, or there need to be some mitigation matter, matters put in place. Maybe that's after the fact, once it gets built, I'm not sure. But I, I think as it stands, that's a little inadequate. Overall, I do like the design, I do like the concept, um, but those are my main concerns and I'd love for my colleagues to. To have some more conversation about this as well.
Alright, thank you, Jesse. Hey Bruce, before you go again, I'm gonna, I want to just say something, Jesse, back to you. Um, you know, we did hear from Kyle earlier that the residential basically has to subsidize the. Commercial at the moment. And, and, you know, without knowing anything about the. Financial model required to build what he's showing. I could imagine that. To put more rec- commercial in would require more residential and that, you know, rather than. You know.
Yeah, I understand.
Would he need another floor to make, you know, another building a hundred percent commercial?
I understand, I, I, again, so I can't remember who said that, I think it was one of the commentators. Maybe it comes down to how much profit you're trying to make. I mean, I don't, again, I don't know the financials either. But what I've seen in town is buildings get built, the commercial sits vacant for years, it's clearly not a priority. So if it is a higher percentage, it becomes a priority to fill it.
Okay.
That's part of my logic. I want someone to convince, I want someone to convince me why the logic's wrong, right? I, I don't know. Um, I also think, like many of the other projects we've talked about, it's a one-way decision. If this gets built. And it's only thirty percent commercial, that's never changing, never, ever, ever. And this is one of the few places in town where we, I could imagine a real commercial development happening. That would be somewhere with a dozen shops, a couple restaurants, whatever, right? There, there are not a lot of places like that in our town. So I think, I, I do think we need five thousand more units, I totally agree. But I think we need to be careful about where we say, great, as much density as possible versus more intentional. How, um, mixed-use town center type of development that we as the planning board envision is appropriate for the location.
Alright.
Uh, obviously, we've been involved in the thirty percent conversation for a long time. Um, we were involved when it was first proposed and our Levine's Pleasant project was kind of the basis of that. Um, that conversation was really about downtown, uh, Jesse, and thirty percent being relevant there. Um, the twelve thousand square feet that we proposed as retail is effectively a Wal- uh, a Walgreens. Right? So Walgreens are twelve thousand square feet. Um, Walgreens have quite a bit of parking around them. Um, and they're one-story. Uh, so, uh, in addition to the retail and the cost of subsidizing new construction. There's a parking component that goes with the retail. Um, and I think that we're, all of us have a cell phone, all of us order things from that. Um, things have changed a great deal um in the last fifteen years as our downtowns are evidence that as downtown North Hampton. Uh, looks at right now, there's a lot of empty storefronts. We're our own tenants at this point. Um, I'm sorry, it looks like we're not working. Hard to fill those retail uh spaces, Jesse, but we are. Um, and it is a very difficult uh place to, uh. The retail environment is not a very forgiving place right now. And um, so. And that is, on the other side of, of the ledger is a massive. Multi-generational uh housing crisis. So, um, when we look at this last BBC parcel, uh parcels, um, in South Amherst, we look at those needs and try to. Uh, tailor a project that would meet both of those. Um, so to your point about. In addition to thirty percent, Jesse, it's, it's also, where does that space have frontage? How, how would that space be something that if you were the owner of that business, that you would make sure that your sign saw that and, and uh people would walk by and you'd have the. Uh, the, the footfall that you would need in order to pay your rent um to these spaces. And with a site like this, where the wetlands are the middle of the site and all we've got is Lu- Lu- uh Lannan and Gould. Can't really put uh, uh, commercial facing Bay Road, right? That, that traffic's going fast as we're all talking about. There's not a lot of pedestrian footfall, nobody's stopping there and pulling off. So it's really. Gould and Lannan, and we try to do everything we could to fit as much as we can. And focus it on places where we thought it would be best, which is that corner where Gould and Lannan meet facing south. And uh, the entirety of Building Three uh along West Street. So we've tried to do as much as we can. Um, while really balancing the need for uh the housing.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I, great, I, I know, it's clearly not easy, right, to, to, to meet all these needs. But yeah, that, that just might get reacted. I'm sorry, one more, one more point I wanted to make about the um inclusionary housing. Uh, I think it would, there's also an opportunity. To think about putting those together. And making, trying to build a community that those I can imagine might be more family tenants than the, if it is going to be primarily student rentals. So I don't know if there's a scheme you can come up with to where, where those are placed so that they're. Uh, potentially grouped with some amenities more geared toward families occupation. Just another thought. Thanks.
Kyle, you have a fair amount of flexibility on that, don't you, in terms of uh which units you make the uh below-market rents?
Uh, in the past, what we've done and been advised to do from the town is to disperse them as much as possible.
Okay. Nate, do you see that advice changing or being flexible at all?
It's the way the bylaw is written, um, in terms of having units be. You know, proportional in bedroom size to the overall count and then dispersed through the development. I think. You know, we, the building commissioner and staff can, can examine that. Uh, I know the housing subcommittee, the planning boards talked about that and. The consultants for the housing production plan have also noted it as part of their goals and strategy to revisit that. I think. You know, some of that language was put in originally when the inclusionary zoning bylaw was proposed, you know, just to make sure we followed, you know, fair housing and, you know. And weren't discriminating. So there were cases where, you know, you're essentially segregating the affordable units, creating their own entrance, which is, you know, in violation of fair housing. Um, and so, you know, there's this language in there and the question is, you know, how, how flexible is that language? And uh, you know, and so again, if in this development, you know, it might make sense to have the units be grouped, uh, you know, just because. Um, you know, there, you know, we've heard in other projects, when it's dispersed, you know, the neighbors, you know, the, the affordable units sometimes might actually not. Feel as much of a community as some of the other units. And so I think it's something I, you know, I, I noted and talked to the building commissioner about.
Okay, yeah. I mean, on the one hand, you don't want to stigmatize those folks and have that be the wing where they all live.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess I was imagining like, oh, there's the playground out back there. So that's where these three-bedroom units are that are. More affordable for families to get into. So yes, I, I totally see the issues, but maybe there's some middle ground to find.
Great. Alright, uh, Karen.
Yeah, I just again want to just urge that you do as much brainstorming to see. What is really going to attract the families that? That we're trying to have stay in Amherst to fill our schools and. Um, and as far as the commercial space, it's true that people aren't ordering so much. But there's been a more and more greater need to have a community, a place to gather. So if the commercial could be thought out to be the kind of thing where there's a gathering place and maybe little places that fulfill the needs. If you could rethink that, that would be really great.
Alright, thanks Karen. Bruce, and then Fred.
Um, Kyle, the, the, one of the items in the development.
Um, Kyle, the, the, one of the items in the development application report is a concern or a question related. Is the facade of the building interesting enough, um, blah, 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 and so forth? And I think it is, actually, I disagree with the concerns that are expressed in that, I think you've done a very good job on that. But um, when I was looking at the renderings as you were running them through, I looked at the balconies. And all of the balconies have got their, what we might call the reveal walls, those sidewalls, they're all dark green or some nice color of green. It occurred to me that you'd have an opportunity to have a palette of five or six different colors. And you could really enliven the facade of that building by having different balcony, having different colors for different balconies or different units. And I wondered, I, I, I think that would be a very nice touch from uh, viewing from uh, the parking lot and coming by. And uh, I wonder whether you wouldn't agree and if you do, whether that might be something that you would uh, enliven the facade by doing.
I appreciate that and we'll discuss that with uh, the folks at Modus.
Kyle, am I right? You, I, I thought there were at least two colors, there were some white sidewalls and there were some green sidewalls.
There's two, and I think that Bruce's point about that becoming more than two is, is valid. And I'll discuss that with him.
All right, Fred.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, I, I seem to be the one that leads the charge on this that um. I, I think dispersing the uh, affordable housing throughout. Uh, and I understand why, but I think it is proving to be counterproductive. And it's, it's certainly something that we're looking at in the housing subcommittee about. Um, you know, looking at a modification to the bylaw because uh, it, it really uh. Makes these uh, less attractive for the market that you really want to reach. So uh, and I never would have thought that until we watched what happened uh, at North Village. The old design and the, the subsequent design that now that UMass has managed to destroy. Something that should not have been destroyed.
All right. I don't see any more hands at the moment. Um, Nate, we're, we're gonna be waiting for the conservation commission. And. Uh, Kyle, we've, we've heard a number of comments, let's say, about the traffic study. Uh, including some hopes that you could expand that or elaborate a little bit more. Uh, is there anything else that we are waiting for, Nate?
There, there isn't a lighting plan yet, um, you know, no, you know, no photometric. Um, you know, I think there is no sign plan, which, you know, doesn't necessarily have to be. Um, you know, in the development application report, we talked about the amenities, so there hasn't been discussion about what, you know, if there's any outdoor seating. What it looks like, the gabian walls, um, some of the more detailed aspects of it. I just understand kind of what it, you know, um, what that looks like. You know, I think the uh, you know, the, the conservation commission will review the stormwater and everything. And so, you know, I'm, you know, they're meeting next week and I think some of it would be just to see where, you know, where that discussion goes. Um, you know, Kyle's, you know, the site's proposing, you know, essentially an engineered solution which works. You know, if there are changes to it, it could change the site plan, for instance, if there's bio retention areas or something else. And so, um, you know, some of this kind of, you know, working with the conservation commissioner, continuing this until we know how they review it.
By the way, um, I'm sorry, Nate, Pam, can you bring Karen back into the panel? Somehow, somehow she bounced out.
And I think, you know what, you know what, um, you know, so, you know, in terms of the parking, you know, the bylaw says too, unless the, an applicant, you know. Um, you know, justifies or shows that the demand can be met with what's there, so the parking ratios work. And so, you know, that's not a traffic study, it's something else. And so I think if we need more information to understand how, why one-to-one parking works. I think, you know, whether that's a narrative or some other explanation, I think that, um, you know, would be important for the board. Uh, to grant a special permit for the height, you know, in the, you know, there's three sections in the bylaw that are, that will be used. And so, on the, you know, make sure the board understands, you know, how that height is being looked at. And is it, you know, appropriate and reasonable and not detrimental and, you know, everything else that's in the development application report and in the bylaw. I think those are big ones, uh, you know, there's a lot of retention or retaining walls. And so I just would want to make sure that everyone understands kind of the site from the civil, uh, civil plan set. I think the architectural renderings are helpful and I think the floor plans, I think the, the general site layout is, to me, understood. I just want to make sure that the board, everyone understands that, you know, what Kyle showed when he went, went through the plans, all those kind of bold lines on the site. Were actually retaining walls at varying heights. And so, you know, what looks like a flat plain in, in, in the rendering, the landscape plan is actually, you know, terraces and there's a lot of plantings. And so, you know, just if we need to spend more time on that, I just would want to make sure that everyone, you know. Kind of understands what the site will look like, right? It's gonna be stripped of topsoil, all the trees and vegetation will be removed. And then it will be developed and replanted and, you know, there'll be structures there and parking, but, you know, the grades will change a bit. Uh, and, you know, you know, and then, you know, what we're seeing is, you know, different. So if we need a cross-section, you know, from the Wooner to Bay Road to show the, you know, the buildings and the, the lawn area. And the retaining walls and the sidewalk and road, you know, if that's something, some, you know, the board needs to understand the project. You could let me know or we could say, talk about it tonight.
Yeah, all right. One question that I, what I, that I had for you Nate was. How long has this site been zoned the way it is now? In other words, how many years has it been since a developer actually proposed to develop this site?
Right, and so, you know, this, there were studies going back to two thousand, we had Dodson and Flinker do a village center study here. We had looked at a few other um, opportunities and so the zoning designation, I think, happened in the um, two thousand teens. I think there was uh, a previous zoning amendment and then to get to where it is today, it's been, you know, ten years, eleven years. Uh, before that, it was another designation. And so, you know, I think some of it is, is just nothing had happened with it. It was owned by the essentially Hampshire College, you know, the trustees of Hampshire have owned it for a bit. Um, but you know, zoning is an opportunity and if the opportunity doesn't arise, it doesn't get used. And so, you know, this is kind of the first iteration of something that maybe um. You know, came forward on this site, others may have looked at it, but given, actually, I, I think that the site is very complicated, given the soil. The wetlands, the topography, if you realize that there is lead arsenic. And so, you know, we may not have heard of other developers or people being interested in it, it's just, you know, they never, they never made it far enough to an application. Right? So there has, you know, there have been questions asked over the years, but really this is the first time that, uh, you know, a serious effort was made. To develop this.
Okay, thanks. Jesse.
Thanks, uh, I guess it's sort of a procedural question for you Doug and Nate maybe. And out of respect for the work that Kyle's put into this and might go off and put more work into. It, some of the stumbling blocks on approval seem to be the special per request, mostly around height maybe, at least from my perspective. And so I'm wondering, I know there's tons of details, this is a really big, complex project, like Nate, you were just bringing up many of those details. But if we as a board have concerns or are not inclined to approve it as it is, wouldn't it be better for Kyle to know that now? Try and rework it versus addressing all these other things and then coming back and having us say, no, we don't want to give you the fourth floor. So I'm just, you know, wanting to maybe think about.
Well, I mean, we had a, we had a short conversation like that back in March when this first came. Um, got a kind of quick straw poll from, I think, pretty much the same group that's here tonight. Um, and it seemed like there was generally support for the project in the direction it was heading. So we, we didn't tell Kyle to go away, uh, we asked him to keep working. And here we are, so, um, you know, but I'm happy to, you know, to ask. Hey, everybody, are you guys, are you feeling, are you still feeling positive about this if we work through some of the details? Or are, you know, are there some of these um, permits that, that are gonna be fatal blows? To what, to what he's proposing? Um, does anybody, does anybody feel like they are, um, you know, adamantly opposed to the? Uh, extra height? Um, and I'm, I'm blanking on the other waivers that uh.
Yeah, I think the other ones are just given the site, um, you know, the zoning and then the, the site layout, the setback. So the, essentially the, you know, in, in the BBC, we actually have a minimum and maximum setback, so it exceeds those. To me, those are not, you know, if we like the site layout and the site design, those are, you know, those are to, to be easier to look at than the, the height.
Right. I mean, I can say I was the one that asked for Kyle to do that big section that he, where he had the holy oak range behind. Um, you know, it was kind of hard to see on the screen, um, because it's so elongated. But um, you know, I was interested in how much does applewood? Uh, sort of loom over this site? And um, you know, to me, the, the buildings that, that Kyle's proposing. Were not uh, particularly prominent in their height as you come down that slope. So, so it felt to me like, you know, not, I guess the word that's coming to mind is they kind of nestled into that slope in a way. That was not gonna feel, gonna, gonna feel particularly out of character. Um, so, you know, so I'm, I'm personally inclined to, to agree with that, with the request. And um, you know, but I'm just one vote.
I agree.
And, and I, I sort of threw out the question, Jesse, and I haven't seen, so, other than you, your, yours is still the only hand that's up. So I'm, I guess, uh, you know, I guess I'm interpreting that the rest of us are more or less on board. Um, I, I, you know, earlier I had sort of thrown, I had, I had thrown out, well gee, why didn't we, why didn't you make it five stories? I don't feel that way anymore. Um, I think, you know, four is probably all we should allow. And it's more than, it's all that Kyle should ask for, so. Um, but given the challenging, you know, the environmental conditions to the site. And you know, it feels like you need to build something relatively large to, to be able to, to do those other things. But I don't know the finances.
Yeah, I mean, that's part of the problem I have too. I, I think the fourth, so I went, I spent some time down there, I think fourth, four stories. Visually massing, I think it's fine. My concern is more the functional part that I raised before. And I, so that's leading me towards wanting to see better.
Yeah, well Nate, well Nate, um, there are, has there been ever any discussion about having other parcels down here? Uh, zoned for BBC?
Yeah, I think, you know, some of it is, you know, what, what's the ownership, what was the plans for Hampshire College? But when, you know, when this was designated a village center, right, so this has been a village center concept for a long time. The idea is that, you know, it'd be more than just the Atkins, you know, parcel, right? There's, you know, all quadrants of the intersection, whether you, you know, around the double roundabout. So, you know, what is the potential for development of some of those? I mean, there is wetlands across the street, uh, you know, now Kestrel owns the property, um, you know, there's some great connections to, uh, you know, the range. And so, you know, there's, there's some ability to possibly develop more. Um, but you know, not, nothing, you know, I'd say there's been ideas and conversations and there's, you know, there's possibility, but.
But they're really, you know, it'd be up to us to propose some more parcels BBC. You know, I mean, because one of the things that's a little bit challenging is that if this is the only parcel BBC, you know, like Jesse said. Do, you know, is the onus on this particular development to create from scratch a, a village center? And I mean, that seems kind of unfair. And what's to keep us from, you know, encouraging other parcels, you know, around the roundabouts to, to do that? Karen.
Kyle, could you, this is just another question. What, what does a two or three-bedroom rent for in the middle of town right now in one of your buildings?
I could look online and plan that out, Karen, I'm sorry. Um, I can tell you that through, Alex does all that through Amherst Innovative Living. So I know it's posted, I know it's, it's live right now, um, on apartments.com, might have to look to tell you.
So, is it, is it out of the question to have part of these? Uh, could you have any part of this be a possibility for, for owners to buy an apartment? So that we could really steer this in the direction of, of families?
Uh, ownership in multifamily in my mind, uh, is a condo. Um, a condominium requires condo docs and homeowners association, et cetera. Um, I have not done that, um, I haven't. Built and sold condos in the past, um, I, as, as you guys are aware, there's not a lot of new condo development coming to the board or getting built in Amherst currently. Um, and I think there's a lot of reasons for that. So um, we are only proposing rental, not for sale on this project. And to be frank, on, on, on all of our projects. So we have not proposed or considered any of these apartments being sold as condos. It would really change uh, a, a great number of things about the project.
Okay. All right, um.
Karen, a two-bedroom is thirty-five hundred to thirty-five seventy at Levine's Pleasant.
Great. So it's twenty after nine. Karen, do you wanna, do you wanna say something else? No? Okay, well, I don't want to prolong this evening unless, uh, you know, unless there's something for us to, to talk about. Kyle, you have agreed to go through the development application report and respond to the issues that are raised in that? I think that would be, that would be great, that would help us, uh, you know, get a lot further before we meet again. And, and maybe the next hearing won't be, have to be um, as lengthy. In that case, uh, maybe we should continue this hearing at this point. Nate or Kyle, uh, when do you think you would be through the conservation commission? When, what, you know, are we talking, if we, should we continue to, two weeks from now or should we wait for a month?
Uh, I think it's a good question. Um, I imagine that we, uh. Conservation and planning won't both, you know, end at the exact same time, um, or in perfect order, you know, with quorums and technical difficulties, et cetera. Um, so I'd be open to either a meeting in two weeks or a month.
Okay, well, we usually like to have conservation completed so that your approved site plan. Reflects whatever they are asking for.
Okay, I would say a month then absolutely and as the first next meeting.
All right.
Unless Nate disagrees.
Nate, do you, what do you think?
No, I, I would say, suggest June fourth then, um, you know, that gives, you know. Uh, you know, the conservation commission, they'll have reviewed, I don't know, I don't know if they'd have another one before then. But if there are any proposed changes or ideas, it gives Kyle and his team enough time to have any, I, you know, any possible changes. To respond to the development application report, possibly update the traffic uh, study. And so that could, you know, lead to a, you know, a good meeting, I think it was the twenty-first of May, it's just too soon. Essentially, we'd want documents next week almost for the packet, so I don't, you know, and I think waiting till later in June isn't, isn't necessary. I think there's enough to talk about whether or not the conservation commission is through. I could, you know, I could, we go June fourth and then the other meeting in June, have to have this twice in June. And by then the conservation commission will have seen it at least twice as well and maybe be in a place where they're comfortable with it and we can move forward.
All right, uh, Bruce and then Fred. All right. Uh, Bruce and then Fred. Bruce, you're still muted.
I, uh, I muted myself because it was already open. Sorry about that. Uh, I just wanted to say that I won't be here for the twenty-first, so I want to really, uh, encourage the June fourth thing, cause we're only six at the moment and, uh, it would be good not to lose members.
Yes.
So I'm, uh, I'm happy about June.
All right. Uh, Fred.
Oh yeah, I think June is the, uh, minimum. I think it's gonna be longer. But it's, that's not really a problem because if it needs to be longer than on June fourth, there'll be a perfunctory motion to continue it for another two weeks or whatever is required. So.
Okay. Great. Okay. So I think, um, let's see, Pam, do we have, uh, any agenda items on the June fourth meeting yet?
Uh, Nate, we actually have potential for the Munson Library. So I just don't know which one you would want to go first. Kyle's or, or that other, um, possibility that we learned about.
The one we're not gonna mention. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
It's a ramp and a, it's a, you know, improve, it's accessibility improvements to Munson Library with a grant. Uh, it's a town sponsored project. Usually I'd say we'd want the town to go after an applicant, but given the length of discussion for this project, I'd almost want the town the Munson product to be first, to be honest and, um,
Okay.
be second, but that could be that, you know, Munson's at six thirty-five and Kyle's is scheduled for six forty-five.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So, um, Bruce, you wanna make the motion?
So moved, I was going to say. Move to continue the hearing, uh, to, uh, six forty-five on, uh, the meeting of June.
Fourth.
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 All right. Thank you. I'll second it. Don't see another hand. Any more conversation this evening about this project? No, no hands. All right. Motion to continue. Uh, why don't we start with Karen this time?
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Johanna? Did we lose Johanna? All right. I'll skip her for the moment. Jesse?
Aye.
Fred?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Nate? That's five in favor. One stepped away from the camera. So the motion passes. Johanna, we wanted to get your vote to continue to June fourth.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry, solo parenting and freaking out kids because of the Celtics.
Well, thanks for stopping back in.
Thank you for your time.
Kyle, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving along. New, let's see. All right. Looks like the next item on the agenda is new business. Upcoming zoning initiatives. Nate, something you wanna talk about?
If Rob Moore is here, he, we were gonna have, uh, Rob, uh, discuss it. This is something that was provided to the CRC as well. It's just to keep the board kind of up to date with some, some, you know, kind of more short-term ideas for zoning amendments. And then, you know, we can always have a discussion about that and others.
All right, Rob, welcome.
Uh, thanks. Hi, everybody. Uh, Rob Mora. And yeah, I'd just like to give a little update on the work the planning department staff uh, will be focusing on for the rest of the year. And Pam, if you don't mind, uh, I've got a, a small uh, set of slides, uh, that I'll briefly run through, uh, and, and this this particular set of slides was, is developed to, um, aid in a discussion with the Community Resources Committee. Uh, that'll be happening tomorrow. Uh, so you'll, you'll very quickly see that there are items here that the planning board is very much familiar with, and I won't spend time on those, uh, those items. Uh, Pam, you can go to the next slide. So here's a list of, uh, items, uh, zoning amendments that the staff are committed to working on this year hopes, uh, in hopes of bringing to, uh, the council. And I'll talk about each of those, uh, and I'll focus on the items the planning board may not be familiar with in more detail. Uh, next slide, please. And I see that aid use is on your agenda for later on, so I'll leave that alone. And, uh, I know you've all been working on that quite a bit for, for the last couple of months. And, uh, I know you'll be discussing that later, so I'll move on to the next slide. Uh, which is also, uh, something that I heard Nate gave a little bit of an update on earlier. Uh, there isn't much more to say, uh, to what Nate had added, uh, the planning or the CRC is discussing this again, uh, continuing to work on this, uh, through their, their meetings, regular meetings and is also on tomorrow's agenda. Uh, so we're following along with that, uh, providing staff support along with, uh, the Sustainability Director, uh, to aid in, uh, completion of the proposed solo bylaw. Next slide, Pam, please. So here's a new one. Um, and, uh, we're just calling this a, a BN extension, uh, on Main Street. Uh, and this is, uh, just a map change. Uh, it affects just three properties that I'll show you in a moment. Uh, changing from residence to, uh, business neighborhood district, uh, and, um, you know, supporting some goals, uh, for the local businesses in that area are definitely a key factor in this proposal. Uh, if we can move to the next slide, Pam. And here's just this, uh, uh, an image of the, um, mapping for that area. Uh, all the way over to the right, kind of falling off of the image is the BBC district along Dickinson Street. Uh, and then we've got this, um, kind of odd piece of BN that is, uh, just a spot, uh, piece there. Uh, three nineteen to three twenty-one. And what we're gonna talk about are the, the three properties to the left, uh, shown on the next slide, Pam. So we've outlined the three properties that will be subject to this change. Uh, two twenty-nine uh, is a existing two-family dwelling, uh, two fifty-seven is the Amherst Inn. Uh, and I'll talk a little bit about, more about that in a moment. And two eighty-five is an existing six-family, uh, multifamily property. Uh, next slide, Pam. Um, so two twenty-nine is, is an existing owner occupied duplex. Um, we've, you know, no specific thoughts about that particular property. Um, and, uh, you know, but do see that there's a potential for maybe a little bit uh, more expansion of the property. It can accommodate a little bit more building footprint, possibly a little more off-street parking with a development someday in the future. Uh, two fifty-seven, the Amherst Inn, and this is really kind of the, the, the the driving force behind this, uh, proposal at this time. Uh, it exists there as an accessory use, uh, bedding breakfast to an owner occupied property. Um, I was surprised to actually learn that, uh, getting into the permit history. Uh, it's limited to only having four guests on the property at any time, along with the owner, uh, that must oc- uh, occupy the, uh, the building as well. So there's an opportunity here to, uh, support this business in a way that it, it really needs to, uh, to be sustainable for the future. Uh, and, you know, building, I, I had an opportunity to tour the building recently and it has eight very nice guest rooms. Uh, there's a, a space that is, uh, has not been restored, that has the potential to be a ninth guest room. Uh, but the current zoning permit as an accessory use bedding breakfast would not allow any of that to happen. Uh, and just limiting to four guests, uh, is, is very restricting for uh, a building of that size to, to function and operate the way it needs to, uh, hopefully long into the future. So, um, unfortunately, there isn't any other opportunity in the RG district to, um, to accommodate this type of use. So, uh, changing it to the BN would give the opportunity to, uh, convert the, the not, the owner occupied uh, accessory use to a principal use. And, uh, the owners of the inn have absolutely no, um, you know, plans to expand or alter anything, uh, simply use the, the property as it exists and take advantage of, uh, all the, the guest rooms and having those available for, uh, for short-term rental. Uh, two eighty-five, uh, is a si- existing six-unit apartment building. This is a property regulated by special permit. It was, uh, recently damaged, uh, in a fire a few years ago, rebuilt, uh, you know, fully renovated, improved with all new systems. Uh, it's a very large footprint, very large lot coverage. Uh, there's really absolutely no, you know, no op, uh, uh, really opportunity to do anything more with this property. So I don't, I don't see, um, any concern about or any, uh, effect of this bylaw change on this property, uh, except that it would be incorporated in the BN district. Um, if we can move along, Pam, uh, to another, uh, potential zoning amendment having to do with sororities and fraternities. Um, sure, you're aware, our current bylaw has a use classification uh, that includes fraternity sororities, social dormitories, uh, or similar uses. Um, what we're, uh, thinking about doing is presenting a bylaw change that will separate, uh, and create, uh, two, uh, categories of fraternities and soror- sororities. Uh, you know, one that would be recognizing those affiliated with the university and those that are not. Uh, from what I, uh, have, am learning is that there's, um, not only locally, but across the country, there's um, instances where fraternities are, uh, in particular fraternities are uh, disaffiliating with their university or college, um, and continuing to exist, um, and, and operate as a fraternity, uh, but perhaps not, uh, subject to the uh, guidance that's provided by, uh, the university or college. Uh, so what we'd like to do is create a, a, a separate category with some standards and criteria where uh, it'll allow for a review and consideration by, uh, most likely the zoning board when a fraternity or sorority loses its affiliation and wants to continue to operate, uh, and function in a house that is a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, building, uh, in all of the ten cases that we have in this town.
Rob, uh,
Sure.
Jesse has a question about that.
Sure.
Yeah, uh, thanks. So what, what's the motivation of that? Is that what you just said? So that if a fraternity sorority loses their affiliation from UMass, that they could still exist because we'll let them? Is that what you're saying?
No. So there, there are actually two, uh, fraternities that have lost their affiliation, uh, from UMass and uh, I guess it was probably a surprise to some to learn that the fraternity doesn't necessarily have to stop operating if it loses its affiliation. Um, our zoning bylaw, uh, is, uh, structured in a way that every use must be provided for in some way. Uh, it's very different than most bylaws in the state where if it, the use is not specifically, uh, identified in the uh, bylaw, it would be prohibited. That's not the way our bylaw works. So a, uh, a fraternity that is operating, you know, under the watch of the university and connected to the university that exists today can lose its affiliation and still be a fraternity. Uh, you know, uh, operating under the national organization and fulfilling its missions and goals and, and still functioning. And if they do so, uh, our zoning bylaw has nothing to say about it. It, it remains. And that's the determination that's been made in, in those couple of cases. Um, but it, there's a desire to perhaps have the opportunity to review the use in those situations through the special permit process and, you know, have, have again, the opportunity to add conditions or understand, you know, a little bit more about the use and uh, you know, build in some permit, um, protection to the neighborhood for those uses to continue or in some cases, maybe even not allow it. Uh, you know, would, would be certainly an outcome that could, could happen. Uh, so we, we don't have that ability to even have that, you know, consideration now. Um, a change would provide that process for any future uh, fraternity or sorority, uh, of, that would lose its affiliation. Now, there are, like I said, ten properties that we're talking about here, uh, in, in RG districts, uh, that would be affected by, potentially affected by this. Um, if there were to be a change in the future, and two of those have already, um, you know, lost their affiliation with the university, maybe electing to not, uh, you know, become affiliated again. Uh, and if that's the case, they would be protected, you know, as a non-conforming use as well and not subject to any change uh, that this bylaw would, would.
Sure. And if I can, if I can follow up. So, so I'm sure there's many reasons why fraternity is, or sorority would lose their affiliation with the university. But the cases I know of are for misconduct or some, you know, dangerous or, or something outside of the norms of university behavior most of the time. And so in those cases, is that gonna be part of the discussion that you imagine? So currently there's two that aren't affiliated, you're saying. They would then have to come to ZBA, I guess, to get this special permit, right? Or somebody? And is that gonna be part of the conversation is really what I'm asking.
Yeah, I think it would be if there was, you know, and, and not, not the two particular, you know, existing situations, but say, you know, if there was to be another, if this bylaws in place and there was a, another fraternity that was having that kind of trouble or effect on the neighborhood and they lost their affiliation, they would have to go to the zoning board. And I think that would absolutely be part of the discussion. Now, keep in mind that there's probably, I think there's two of the, of the ten properties that are regulated by special permit and has a set of conditions. The others are pre-existing, non-conforming with absolutely no set of conditions or oversight, uh, by a permit, uh, for the property. So that would give an opportunity to you know, yes, have the discussion, understand what those, those concerns, those situations are and look for ways to possibly mitigate it or, um, develop management plans and improve the property and look for better performance. And I think there'd be, you know, multiple parties involved and interested in that discussion.
Parties is the key word. Thank you. Yes.
All right.
Rob, I see Fred's got a question.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I, uh, I'm all for regulating, uh, something like that. I'm just wondering if, uh, you make the change in the bylaw now, whether they simply continue as, uh, a non-conforming. I, I don't know if you actually accomplish what you're attempting to accomplish. Am I missing something?
No, you're absolutely right. I've been pretty clear about this, that, you know, the, the, this is not targeted to the two currently unaffiliated, uh, organizations, you know, if those, those are, those, uh, would continue to exist as non-conforming uses, uh, and not be subject to this. Any future uh, organization that became unaffiliated would be subject to review. Or perhaps if the two that are currently unaffiliated now regained affiliation and, you know, something happened differently down the road. Um, and we also have the situation where different organizations come in and out of the houses. Uh, so, you know, things could change in the future. But you're right, it, it would, it would not have any effect on the existing condition until something changed.
All right. Proceed.
Okay. Uh, if we can move on, Pam, uh, we can skip the next slide. We talked about that and go right into the next item, which is temporary uses. This you might remember, some of you, if you're around in discussions from four or five years ago. Uh, we were interested in establishing a temporary use provision in the bylaw. It doesn't exist currently. Uh, we did have a, um, uh, an opportunity to touch on this a little bit and, and utilize it uh, during COVID when we did some, some short-term measures to, uh, deal with some of the changes uh, that were needed to, to get through that time. Uh, we saw some good success and, and, uh, ways we could, you know, accommodate temporary uses. So, you know, we wanted to pick this back up again. We actually were, um, recipients of a, a grant, a few years ago, where the PVCP uh, ha- had helped us develop a draft regulation. So we have, we have quite a bit of work done on this and ready to, we have quite a bit of work done on this and ready to um, you know, pick it back up, start working on it again. Uh and uh hopefully present something soon. Uh like I said, we don't have any criteria in the bylaw for temporary uses. We kind of work our way through um situations where there are either seasonal uh events or special events and uh what we often get asked, uh you know, how to use agricultural land differently. And, you know, it could be anything from uh, you know, maize, like we see in other communities, to um, you know, caterers partnering with the agricultural entity to have uh an event, a dinner, or some other type of uh activity on the site. Uh of course, food trucks are very popular right now. We get a lot of requests for that. Uh so we're just looking to move that forward uh and talk more about that. Uh the next item, Pam. Uh this one, we can go right by, but um you're working on this. In fact, you've voted to recommend, and I and I understand that'll be going to council very soon for consideration. That's the uh increase in mod area for additional unit dwelling units in the RG district, um otherwise known as but note M. Um and then, you know, we have this list of of things that we hope to uh move on to. Um we, and some of this is dependent on funding. We do have a capital request in to aid with uh some study uh of the East Village uh for potential overlay. Uh we expect the CRC will continue their work after the solar bylaws complete for battery storage. Uh I know all of you are working on uh some ideas for North Amherst um. And then we expect with the downtown design standards um to have some recommendations come out of that work that might result in some proposed uh zoning bylaw amendments. Uh and I think you heard maybe a little bit earlier that uh there could be some changes to inclusionary zoning proposed by the Housing Trust that uh might come forward this year. So that's all.
Uh Bruce has his hand up.
Okay.
Yes, uh uh i- in reading, uh this actually is uh not uh an item further later tonight. The uh Housing Production Plan uh Goals and Strategies. Uh one of the recommendations is we consider, I think, a forty R zone. Um and and maybe that's um upcoming later in not twenty-five, but maybe twenty-six. But it it seems like something that we should be considering. So maybe that's something that's not quite on the twenty-five list, but perhaps uh um uh banging around uh in the entry uh uh for twenty-six.
Yeah, thanks for s- and I, you know, I think that is definitely um from staff's perspective, a very viable option for East Village, you know, so as we get into that, exploring that, you know, that could be one of the solutions uh proposed. Uh and there's some things that obviously are not on this list, and this list can uh can certainly change. And as the Housing Production Plan gets completed and, you know, we are always looking at those parcels, those isolated parcels throughout town that, you know, wouldn't it be great if there were other opportunities there? They really, you know, fit, fit well for some type of development, uh but the zoning just doesn't uh doesn't work with what would need to be done there. So um we're identifying those and, you know, we'll probably continue to talk about those uh later in twenty-five and into twenty-six as well. Uh and those could
Yo- Johanna has her hand up.
Okay.
Awesome. Thanks so much for this preview, Rob. Really appreciate it. Can you expand just a little bit more on the battery ener- energy storage systems and what direction y'all are thinking about going there?
Um, we're not, you know, I I I don't have any, I don't have any particular information on that. I know that it's been um, you know, a a subject that's come up to the solar bylaw development. You know, whether or not to incorporate it, keep it separate. I, you know, I expect that there'll be continued conversations once the solar bylaw is completed. Um but we don't, you know, I don't have any more information other than that. That is um, you know, something that rests with the CRC right now. It was uh referred to the CRC by the council. And I'd expect they will, you know, discuss that and decide what to do with it after they finish their work with the solar bylaw.
Okay. Fred?
Uh, Rob, just this very quickly, in the solar bylaw, there's um boilerplate language about compliance with the uh Massachusetts Electrical Code. And that is technically incorrect. It should be the National Electrical Safety Code. They got the wrong code identified. And I just want to make sure that that gets considered. I I'm happy to discuss that with somebody. I, you may know, I'm the Secretary of the Massachusetts Code Committee. And I'm also the senior member on Code Panel Nine, which is the high voltage panel uh in the National Electrical Code Committee. Uh so I I do know uh uh what is covered here and it 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 that they're pointing to the wrong code.
Great. Tha- thanks for pointing that out. And if I've got any follow-up questions on that, Fred, I'll get in touch with you, but I'll make sure. And I'm sure probably most likely Chris Brushup is listening right now, but she is the primary staff working on that with the CRC, and we'll make sure that that is updated properly. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
That is all, that is all I have.
All right. Well, thank you for coming.
Okay, thank, thanks for the time, everyone.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, time is nine forty-nine. Let's see if we can finish up the rest of this. All right, um, any other not reasonably anticipated new business topics? Oh, Johanna?
Doug, I need to go. I've got, I gotta get kids to bed. It's too late. Sorry to leave early. Bye.
All right, Pam and Nate, any of the, any not anticipated new business?
No.
All right, how about old business?
I don't know where.
Not anticipated? No? All right, um, general housing discussion, Nate?
Yeah, we have three things on the agenda. Really, two of them are, you know, I mean, we could spend time talking about all of them, but you know, in the packet, there's essentially a a draft zoning amendment for accessory dwelling units. I'm going a little out of order here. And the idea would be to, you know, vote on it and refer it to council and move it along. You know, the state is now putting out determinations uh on their municipal law uh website, um in terms of how the Attorney General is reviewing town meeting actions from the fall and changes in bylaws. And so they're starting to, you know, put out determinations about, you know, ADU bylaws. Um and so I think what what we have, what's in the packet, you know, is a definition for a local ADU. Uh, you know, the protected use ADU and then requirements for both, and then some additional requirements for the local ADU. You know, I feel pretty good that, you know, almost everything there is workable. I struck out uh one, one of the conditions. The state just recently, last week, de- defined that a principal dwelling is, you know, any structure with with at least one dwelling unit. So, you know, we had framed our bylaw as allowing accessory dwelling units to only single-family homes. And they're saying that's that's wrong. And they've, they've made the case in two different uh in response to two different uh zoning amendments, and they've, you know, written a pretty lengthy decision about that. And so we, you know, we can't now, we can't move forward and say that it's for single-family homes, knowing they've made that determination. Um, so what, so I updated that for the pack. Actually, what's in the, what's in the packet right now, I can share my screen, is a, you know, a three-page amendment that would essentially replace the current uh five point one oh one one for accessory dwelling units in the bylaw. So it's essentially remove and replace with this one. You know, everything we have in there for accessory dwelling units would now just be framed as a local ADU. I'm proposing that it can be up to twelve hundred square feet or ninety percent of the, you know, habitable space of the dwelling. Uh, you know, has to have owner occupancy. But the idea is that, you know, we we would want something that somewhat incentivized to have, if someone wanted to have a bigger ADU or doesn't want to have a protected use ADU, you know, go larger in size, they can. Um it's administratively approved. Yeah, it has to follow the process outlined in the bylaw. So there is an application and a basically a decision made by the Building Commissioner in consultation with staff. And then it has to be owner occupied with a covenant reported at the registry. Um but the hope would be that, you know, what we've already permitted and maybe others would take this route. Uh and then we have to allow the protected use ADUs as the state says. So I attended a webinar yesterday. I put on By the State again about ADUs as a topic, and really, they just want to have it be permitted the way um it's written. You know, they don't really want many regulations, so there was a lot of questions about design guidelines and standards. And the answer, although not a legal opinion, but by UHLC was, no, don't do that, don't do that. And so you know, we, I feel like our bylaw, what I, what's in there um, you know, has you know, a few definitions and a dozen or so requirements is all pretty in line with the legislation regulations. And, you know, and my thought would be if we move this on to council, they pick it up, they give it, they refer it back. And in that time, if there's more determinations by the state, we can adjust it, but at least it gets the ball rolling. My idea for the timeline would be if this gets to council, they pick it up in late May or early June. By the time it comes back through the planning board and CRC hearings and goes to a vote, it's gonna be November. So, you know, we can take action now. We could wait a few months, but then it's gonna be like, you know, February before we have a new ADU bylaw in the books. I feel like it's just I think the Housing Subcommittee is, feels like it's, you know, ready to move on, and we can, you know, modify it as needed throughout the hearing process.
Nate, I thought uh the last we talked about this, I thought we all agreed we were, we wanted to send the draft to the Attorney General with the student house information, you know, stipulation and see what they said. So what happened about that?
Yeah, the Housing Subcommittee discussed it. Uh, you know, the AG's office, I I've asked them a I've remi- I've asked them a few times, and they haven't um responded. I feel like they're very busy. And my understanding of some of these determinations that have been posted online, the student home definition is really a non-starter. And so um I think if they, if they come back and say, yeah, you could do this, I think staff might say, well, it's it's something that wouldn't really be enforced, and is it worth having in the bylaw if it's, you know, something that we're not gonna go with and
So, so in the, in the packet, when I looked at those three pages, that text was red.
Right.
And so I didn't know how to interpret that. What do you mean by including it if it's not proposed to be included?
So those two, the right, that was in red are things that I would recommend not including. So it's in there now, and I would recommend not including it if we referred it to council.
Were you hoping we'd do this tonight?
Yeah, or the next meeting. Um I think it's, you know.
Well, why don't we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? This seems kind of hasty to me to to pass it tonight. And I know, I'm sure Jesse has some opinion about whether we include it or don't. Um Jesse, you've got your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Just to give you the, you're the only one who wasn't at our Subcommittee, Doug. So I wanted to give you the little bit of the backstory. So, yes, Nate sent the question to the AG's office about a couple, the student home and a couple of other things. And what came up in our conversation was our current bylaw on four unrelated and whether that applies to ADUs or not. Cause in the protected use ADU, ADU that came from the state, it was there's no language like that in there. And we thought we were justified as a town to include that even on the protected use ADU. And so that felt important to try and get in our bylaw as soon as we could. And so we agreed to just drop the rest of it for now, maybe to revisit the student home definition later. Um and to try and put that in and get it to council, as Nate said, it has a lengthy timeline anyway. So that's why
So of the six of us of the six of us here, I'm the only one who wasn't at the Subcommittee meeting?
Uh, well, yeah, the four of us are the Subcommittee.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We lost you on it.
So, anyway, I just wanna let you
All right.
That was part of the conversation. And so I, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, what's in the current draft is basically what the state put out, plus the four, no more than four unrelated.
Right, yeah, I mean, essentially
That's different.
Yeah, it's the, it, you know, we we had a memo that the Plenty World looked at at a previous meeting, and I essentially took the standards and conditions we've been talking about and formatted it as if it were a zoning amendment. So you know, I I put it in a format that would actually look like a zoning amendment. And this has been sent to the state, you know, three times. I I'm not sure the, when they will respond. And, you know, what I'm reading, based on the determinations put out there, they're you know, if if communities are taking a, you know, kind of their interpretation of the regulation. Uh because, you know, for instance, we said uh the principal dwelling was defined as having at least one dwelling unit. So a number of communities said, well, it doesn't have to have more than one. It only needs to have one. And the AG's office is saying, well, elsewhere in the regulations and the legislation, here's why it's really referring to more than one. And so, you know, they're you know, they're, they're, when they're going through their determinations, they're um using the whole set of regulations to support their interpretation. And so if we said, you know, they're saying any occupancy restriction or is not allowed on either the principal dwelling or the accessory dwelling. Uh and so that's not the way the regulations to me read, but that's how they're writing their determinations. And so you know, if we want to start saying we'll have a student home definition, but it doesn't apply, it doesn't have to apply to the ADU, it can apply to the principal dwelling. I think they're gonna come back and say, no, the way we're reading the bylaws, the the legislation is this. And it's just that's why it's in red.
But but just right. So that comes out, just to clarify. That's not gonna be included in this.
All right. Well, the the red text didn't, you know, I didn't know what the red text was.
Yeah. So take that out. Take out the line Nate struck out about uh
Yeah.
single family. And then, Nate, am I correct that really the only thing that differs from what the state put out is the one line about no more than four unrelated?
Right. I think everything else we have in there, to me, would be reasonable and follows the state legislation and regulations.
Um, I see that there's still some language about uh located behind the front building.
Yeah, it says to the extent feasible. And so to me, that's enough of a qualifier.
All right. All right, well, I mean.
We can wait. I just, you know.
I mean, that's fine. I mean, if 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 the zoning subcommittees, I mean, do you guys wanna vote this tonight?
I I I I would, but uh, you know, I think we're hoping it wouldn't be ten o'clock, and we can have a little discussion about it. I understand you feel rushed, right? Um, I I would totally respect you, Doug, if you wanna wait.
Well, I mean
How much in it?
I don't know how much I'm gonna contribute in two weeks if, you know, this is, this is where it's at.
Well, if you look, I mean, I think the local ADU is a really interesting idea, you know, so we're allowing up to twelve hundred square feet with a few conditions. You know, do we allow smaller? Do we allow bigger? Some of it would be, you know, uh to try to incentivize its use. We don't have to have a local ADU at all. Um it's something that, you know, has been discussed. And so I think that, you know, it's a discussion point. And so
So, so why don't we just talk, put this on the agenda for two weeks and then we'll plow through it then. Pam, do we have a full agenda already for two weeks from now?
We have room.
I believe that we have room.
Okay.
Hmm. I'm just gonna take a quick look. Ah, I'm on paper. Oh, I think that we can for sure. Hmm.
Okay, good. All right, uh Nate, do you want to talk about any of the other, of the other two things?
Yeah, I think the Housing Production Goals and Strategies, you know, you've had the document for a bit. And so I would ask, you know, if not tonight, but by the end of the week, send me comments. And so Bruce already has. You know, they can be, you know, um, you know, simple comments. They could be, you know, written on a, on the document. Uh, you know, I will say that the consultants then plan to come to the planning board at the next meeting and present the whole plan or maybe the, in in June. And so you know, they're working their way through. The planning board has to vote to essentially a adopt or accept the plan. And so we just wanted to keep the board, you know, up to date with where it was. So you looked at the housing needs assessment, you looked at the goals and strategies. And so you'll have a time to comment on it on again. I just want to make sure that, you know, board members have reviewed it. And, you know, if there's, you know, I've gone through it. I have some comments, other staff has comments. So if you have ideas or comments, just you can send them to me.
Okay. All right. And uh we we're not gonna talk about the overlay tonight?
No, although the Housing Subcommittee, you know, did meet and talked about, um met and talked about it. We'll uh be meeting again to talk about it. And you know, have some ideas and maybe some graphics to help show that for the next meeting.
All right. Okay, moving on, time is ten. Okay, moving on, time is ten oh-three. Uh, for may and our subdivision applications, anything, Pam?
No, not tonight, but um, I believe it's possible that we might have one at the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Okay, about ZBA application?
I don't have anything to report. Nate, do you?
Not really.
Yeah.
Okay, SPP, SPR, SUB applications.
It's that Munson Library project.
Oh, yeah.
The doozy.
And that's it?
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there's one other one, and I'm, I'm blanking on what it might be, but the, um, yeah, it would just be a site plan review application.
Okay, Bruce?
Why are you guys laughing about the Munson Library? Is there a joke that I don't know about?
No, no, I, it's just that we, as staff, we tried to get it in front of the planning board sooner. We couldn't make, we missed the legal deadline by three minutes. And so now it's coming on June fourth, and, no, we have a, we have a, a, a grant to do this, is to take the south entrance and put a ramp on it. And then a walkway to make it fully accessible with the door openers and everything. It's actually a really good project. It just, it needs site plan review, that's all. It's just, you know.
Okay, that's enough.
Okay. Board, uh, committee and liaison reports. Bruce, anything for PVPC?
Uh, no, nothing.
Jesse, anything we haven't talked about already with housing subcommittee?
Hope we've covered it.
Karen, anything for design review board? No? All right, I have, uh, no report. Oh, Karen, go ahead. Your hand is up? Okay. Um, I don't really have a report of chair. Bruce, uh, Jesse, yeah.
Uh, sorry, Doug. We are meeting next week at this time, in case you want to join us. The main topic overlay, just want to let you know that.
Okay, thank you. No report of chair for me. Nate, anything, uh, from staff?
No, you know, I always mentioned the, you know, housing production plan is trying to wrap up. The open space and rec plan will be coming back to the planning board probably over the summer. Um, you know, Dodson is, is trying to get out a draft downtown design um, guidelines. And as Rob mentioned, I think they would lead to some zoning changes, and so, you know, Dodson isn't necessarily recommending zoning changes, but what. You know, from what they might present, we'll have to consider, you know, do we change setbacks? In the downtown, I think what they're showing cannot, you know, you know, what they previewed with staff is, you know, their ideas for where the BL zone is. Can't happen at all with the zoning right now. And so is there an overlay or do we completely change BL? And so. Um, I, I think it's, you know, I think they're big discussions. I think, I like what they presented in some of their i- ideas. Uh, even for along Prey Street, and again, to me, the zoning doesn't really get you there, and so it's. You know, not necessarily having a prescriptive uh, bylaw zoning changes, but saying having more flexibility in terms of setbacks or height. Or design, some design, you know, and then using the design guidelines themselves. And so, you know. For instance, in the BL area, if you want to have four floors, maybe it's only under a roof, or essentially it's three and a half floors. You know, if we want to have articulation in the facade, we need to have varying um, front setbacks. And so right now, I feel like. When someone comes in in the BG, we can allow, we can have a zero setback, and there's really no case to say, well, no, you need, you should actually have a fifteen-foot setback, but. I'm hoping through these design guidelines, we'd say, well, here's what we'd want for a sidewalk width, curb to facade or whatever, and it helps the board. Review projects uh, to have consistency, say, in terms of, you know, public realm and, and design standards and things, so. Um, but it, it, like I said, it, I think what they, what they might show in their, their guidelines. Might not be achievable at all with the zoning, and so then the question is, how do we make that? If we, if we like it, how do we make it happen?
Okay. All right, I think that's, that's it. Time is ten oh-seven. Anybody have anything else?
It is earlier than town council gets out sometime, so, you know, we're, we're doing pretty good.
Look on the bright side, right? Yeah, but they're paid more than we are.
They start later than we do.
Jesse, Jesse, you did say to Doug that we were meeting this time next week. That's, not ten o'clock, right?
The meeting starts at nine.
All right, it's now ten oh-eight, so I think we're adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Thank you all.
Goodbye.
Bye.
Good night.
Everyone.
Bye. And the meeting. Okay, good night, everybody. See you soon.